We good? Okay, here we go. Welcome Susan, you're our only guest here at the moment. We'll call the work session to order for Monday, January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three, S. Kirk Colorado.
Councilmember Heller.
President.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yep.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Great, thank you. Want to welcome Susan Lawson to the podium to give us an annual report on Triple I A.
Perfect. I'm gonna share the podium, thank you.
If you would. Make close friends with that microphone.
Okay.
There we go.
We'll get as close as we can. Hey, so thank you, Mayor, thank you, Counselor, for having me. Again, my name is Susan Lusso, and I am the Operations Manager for Triple I A, who provides the medical dental and vision, or I guess we just do sorry, medical and vision for you guys. Benefits for the employees for the city. So I'm here to present our annual report of the year that we completed on September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-two. Just quickly, Amy Manning, our Executive Director, she does always provide just a short little letter at the beginning of each of our annual reports, and we just like to share sadly, we've had two difficult years for the last two years, and we know that partly due to the pandemic and COVID. But we'll talk through this report about how our year ended and kind of what we're looking at going forward into next year. So at a glance, we finished the year with five thousand two hundred eighty-five members. We grew eight percent with our agencies. We had over six hundred and thirty thousand dollars in program savings, and we ended the year with five point five million dollars in our liabilities and our net possession position. Excuse me, the next couple pages you'll see, these are the ninety agencies we had at the end of the year. We've actually already added five more agencies this year, all pretty small agencies, and then our Board of Trustees from last year. Our Chairman Rick Watkins, he did retire last year at the end of the year. So everyone just moved up. Dan Hammond, who is a city council member for American Falls, he is now our chairman, and then Ruth Bales is our Vice Chairman, and she's with the Minidoka Irrigation District. You'll see on pages six and seven, just our Triple I A team, what we each provide for the trust and our responsibilities to provide to all of our members. Along with just a summary of some of our staff operations, we just like to share, we've done quite a bit of training this year for our staff. We did some HIPAA training updates along with some mental health first aid, so we added some additional training for everybody this year. And then always keeping in mind that we are a public agency and all of our members are public agencies. So we like to share that of the overall budget, our staff salaries are one point seven percent of the total budget. So we try to keep that very low as we're operating through the year. Additionally, our member relations on the bottom, just a summary, we do have two individuals that provide benefits to all of our members. So their whole goal is to, their whole job is to answer our benefit line and answer any questions or handle any issues any member may have. And so you can see last year they did really well with the benefits meeting. We had over fourteen hundred phone calls and just on our benefits line within the year. So they stayed pretty busy helping people out. On page eight, we just like to show the growth over the last three years. So we did mention we added seven agencies last year, and you can see we went from sixteen hundred to eighteen hundred and thirty employees over the course of the year. We provided thirty-eight agencies information about Triple I A last year, and we did rate twenty-six of those. We had seven joined, that's a typo, I apologize, we realized after we printed our books that was in there. And then we had nobody who reduced or dropped their benefits. We did have a couple agencies that added dental vision, and we've had a couple more this year that were able, including you guys, you guys added vision on this year. I'm able to add some of the additional benefits. And then lastly, I'd just like to always share, we had one small agency who was able to offer benefits, who was never able able to offer them before. In this instance, it's a small rural fire district. Their fire chief is the only employee. He never had benefits until they joined Triple I A. So now he has benefits, which is great. That's why we're around to help those guys out. Pages ten and eleven, we're just giving you a high-level overview of some of our programs. So you'll see our maternity program last year, we saved just over forty thousand dollars. This is our incentive program where if individuals choose to have their baby at St. Alphonsus instead of one of the many other providers, we send them an incentive, and it creates a savings for the Triple I A. And then you'll see the medical infusion benefit program, we saved about four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars last year. So anyone who receives their medical, their medication through an infusion process, which is usually held at a hospital, we work with them and get them in this program, we work with infusion centers, order the medication through our pharmacy arm, not a medical arm. And by doing that, we save four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars last year. But the other two items are mail order for prescriptions, you'll hear me talk a little bit about that later. We have two hundred and two members using that now. And then our telehealth program. So just last year, we had a savings of about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Our two nurse practitioners answer the phone twenty-four hours a day, and they'll call the members back within two hours. But this is really preventing those urgent care or those emergency room visits that we can eliminate and handle those calls over the phone. So a lot of times, these are ear infections, sinus infections, those types of things where it's much more costly to actually go into an urgent care center. And I think most importantly, our rural communities really utilize and appreciate this because they don't have to drive maybe an hour, an hour and a half to find a medical facility. Excuse me. And then the last two things, wellness Wednesdays, this is something we added this year, just giving you some insight to what we've seen in the participation so far. Every when, every month, we offer webinar on a Wednesday, and there's a variety of topics that are covered. So it's everything from first responder, mental health, to sleep hygiene, to diet and exercise. And so we've had really good feedback from our agencies so far, and I think we just published our new calendar for the year with the list of our webinars we're gonna provide. And then lastly, our Wonder Health Program. So last year alone, we had seven hundred pounds lost through this program. And that was our first year trying the program out, so we felt like it was pretty successful. Pages twelve and thirteen, our wellness program. So one of the things we really pride ourselves on is being proactive and being preventative in terms of our screening. So our wellness screening program is where we have the nurse practitioner who comes on site, and you guys probably have Velma. How did it go with her?
Really well.
Okay, and did you guys have a lot of participation?
Not the first year.
Okay, so that is one thing we're seeing over and over again, is last year ninety-six percent of our agencies participated, which is fantastic. But only fifty-one percent of our members participated. This is really important to us that we get more members participating, and not just the employees, but get those spouses in. So we're looking at early mornings, evening sessions, or even a weekend wellness screening. Because through these screenings, we're able to find cancers or diagnosis that are early on in their prognosis. So if you look at the middle of page thirteen, you'll see just the list of items we found last year through these wellness screenings. Anyone who has anything that's elevated, our nurse practitioners actually reach out to them. They go through what they're seeing in their blood work, and they either help them find a medication or a program or do additional testing or get them referred to someone who can provide them more guidance. So we feel like this is the probably the most important thing we do is our wellness. And so next, this next year, we will be asking you what we can do to help incentivize or get more members involved, get their spouses in, and get more people through the screening process. So kind of going with the wellness and the mental health, we'll go to the next section, which is about our Employee Assistance Program or Mental Health Program. So this is the second part of our wellness, really, is providing those Employee Assistance Program sessions. So last year, we had one thousand six hundred and eighty-eight EAP visits. So these are individual counseling sessions with mental health providers. And you can see, our network has actually grown even from when we printed this report. We had two hundred and six providers, and of those, we had thirty-six that were vetted, and they are, I shouldn't approved, I guess, or vetted, and they can provide services to first responders. We think this is really important to make sure that they're able to handle the unique issues that first responders have, and make sure they can get the support, our first responders get support that they need through these mental health providers. And we ship wellness, and I believe Dr. Odom was ship wellness, he'll be here Wednesday, Thursday, he'll be here this week with your new recruits, probably going to the police department, and he's gonna do some mental health training with them. And we're always happy to have Dr. Odom come on site and do that. We think if we can get ahead of that and really get that mental health training starting now, it's really gonna help those first responders down the line. You'll see our helpline calls, we had a hundred and fifty-eight of them last year. That was a huge increase in utilization, partly because we encourage people to call. We want people to call in on the helpline and get any assistance now and not have them wait until it's too late or they're in crisis. Of those hundred and fifty-eight calls, twenty-five of them were crisis calls. So these are individuals, and we did have one, for example, where we had to actually call nine-one-one and have people go on site. So we always want to get help before we get to that point for any of our members. On of these crisis calls, you can see, we actually put sixteen people inpatient. And this is a small decrease from the prior year, but it's still a lot of people, sixteen is too many. And of those sixteen, nine of those were children. Most of these childrens were dependents of first responders, so we know not only does it impact our first responders, but it impacts their home life and the individuals in their home as well. And we count anyone who's a child is twenty-five or younger, so they're still dependent under their parents' insurance. So kind of moving on from there, I'm sorry. Getting over our colds, I'm still a little rough. And we'll kind of go back to our financial side and just talk about how we ended the year. So on pages sixteen, we just have to report our incurred but not paid I D M P reserves for Department of Insurance purposes. So we just share with you, those are dollars we have that are locked up and set aside, we cannot touch them, that is a requirement of Department of Insurance. Additionally, you'll see our C D interest we earned last year was about a hundred and forty thousand, that should do much better this year than last year. And then we got about eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand in prescription rebates, and that actually has gone up significantly this year. And we're always looking at ways to increase our rebates, working with our pharmacy benefit manager. And I'll tell you one of the things they've even suggested recently is Canadian drugs have been approved by the FDA. So we're looking at options, it wouldn't be a requirement ever, but just options that we can tap into to have savings. On the top of page seventeen, you'll see our renewal versus our inflation rate. So this is a five-year average of what our renewal rate was, which is five point six percent over the last five years versus the inflation rate. So this is the medical inflation rate. So if a hundred dollar claim this year, it would cost a hundred and six dollars and eighty-two cents next year. So although our rates have been higher than we would like, we're still staying under that inflation number consistently, so just sharing that. And then on page eighteen, this is just additional information, we started sharing last year. Just to kind of help explain our bad years, these are our high claimants from last year. So we track any member that incurs over a hundred thousand dollars in medical claims, and last year we had twenty-five of them. This is more than we'd ever had, and you can see a lot of these, five of these members were past high claimants, so we know that they have some type of diagnosis, we'll probably see some ongoing claims, and then we had some that did term off of the plan. And so these are, these are people that we track very closely. And kind of going back into, and I'll talk about in the next section a little, our wellness screening. For example, we know two of the members on the high claimant had melanoma cancer. Well, that's something now we're looking at instituting skin checks with our wellness, we're gonna do it statewide. And we have a dermatologist we worked with, we ran a pilot program in Southern Idaho, Southeast, and we're gonna do it statewide. Because we know we had just from those skin checks, two people that had pretty serious skin cancers cut off of them just from that one check, so it's really important we do that. So looking forward, we just like to always share, I guess, kind of our good news. It is looking better, claims have come down, things are starting to even out a little bit. One of the things we focus on a lot is our internal costs. So we were able to reduce our admin and operating costs for the third year in a row this year, which is great. We always want to keep those as low as we can. We're actually utilizing a grant writer, looking at available grants, we know as a public agency, first responders, we should be able to find some grant funds out there. So we are trying to tap into some of those resources. And then our stop-loss premium, we were able to reduce that by thirteen-four percent. This is our catastrophic insurance. Excuse me, so, and this is something we'll probably be able to reduce even more as we're continuing on. I mentioned our prescriptions, our mail order prescriptions. We are encouraging our members to move any other maintenance medications to mail order. It is less cost for the member. Instead of paying for three months of drugs, you would pay the cost of two months, so you get ninety-day supply for the cost of sixty. And there are more rebates on the mail order prescriptions, so we are looking at encouraging people to do that. As I mentioned, the skin checks at the wellness screenings, also looking at onsite mammogram buses, really for those rural areas, trying to get more access to care, trying to get that to be more readily available for people. And then kind of we're using our nurse practitioners to do case management for these high claimants. So sometimes they're able to expedite testing, maybe skip some testing that's not required. And so we'll be using them for case management. And then really, lastly, we are pursuing COVID reimbursement from the state of Idaho. It's looking good. I would never say it's a for-sure thing, because we never know. But we're very hopeful we'll be able to get our, all of our COVID expenses reimbursed from the state of Idaho, and that would be a significant help for the trust, just to have kind of that backlog of funds put back into our accounts. Questions?
I think it's interesting that you've got fifty-two hundred and eighty-five insured, but only eighteen hundred and thirty of them are employees. There's a lot of family members on the program.
We do, and it, I would say the majority of our members are in a family situation.
I think that's reflected.
Yeah.
If you can, who provides your stop-loss insurance?
Yes, so currently, our stop-loss insurance, we switched, we were through Blue Cross of Idaho. This year, we went to a company, the name is ISU, it's it's basically the organization Blue Cross out of South Carolina. We are shopping it, I shouldn't say shopping it currently, but we have been looking at other options. We've had conversations with quite a few vendors and just kind of looking at what we could do to reduce that.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Any questions, Counsel?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Out of curiosity, of the, the high claimants, what is that as a percentage of total claims due?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember. So our high claimants, you'll see, it's about six point four million. Our budget this year is about thirty-four million dollars. About ninety-nine percent of that is claims, we figure in the year, this year alone, we'll spend about thirty, it's about thirty-four and a half million. So it'd be, I don't, the math. Six divided by thirty-four.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Great, well, thanks you so much for coming, it's a pleasure to see you.
You too.
Very.
Thank you.
We've had good feedback from our staff
Okay.
on the program. Yes, yeah, very good feedback. The next item is across progress report on the parking code. With six minutes, I think what we'll do is move this into the regular meeting, Jenna, otherwise you're gonna, you're gonna get your introduction done and and anyway, so when we, when we go to the regular meeting, Counsel, I'll be asking you for a change in the agenda to move this item into the regular meeting agenda. We can put it anywhere, let's put it special business by, how's that?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
procedurally, do you want to treat that as a work session, even though it's in a notice public meeting?
Yeah, I think we, we will treat it as if it were in the work session when we get to that item, so there'll be no deliberation of any kind. It'll just be an opportunity, if you don't understand what a definition means or some of the nuances in what's presented, it's not an opportunity to express an opinion, it's just an opportunity to, to kind of get briefed on where we are and that it was quite a process going through that, and there may be a few questions regarding what, what something means, but it won't be an opportunity for us to discuss that among ourselves, that'll be at a future meeting. Okay, so we'll just take, we'll adjourn the work session and we'll convene the council meeting at six o'clock. Welcome, everyone, it's Monday, January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three, it's the time and place for the regularly scheduled city council meeting. The clerk could certify the meeting notice.
This meeting has been noticed in accordance with Idaho Code seven-four dash two zero four.
Call rule, please.
Councilmember Heller.
President.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Here.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Thank you, you can stand and join me in the pleasure of allegiance. Next item is changes to the agenda, Counsel, we were unable to get through our work session agenda, so my request is that we move item four B on the work session agenda into the regular council meeting as item F five.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move for item four B to be repositioned into F five of the regular council meeting agenda.
Second. Thank you, we've got a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing on all, favor say aye.
Aye.
When you posed, she carries. Next item is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. A motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, any discussion on the motion? Hearing on the clerk call rule.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Thank you, we'll move now into special business items. First item under F one is the nomination and elect, and election of a council president for calendar year two thousand and twenty-three. Councilmember, Council President Page, turn it to you for any discussion or nominations.
Counsel members, it's been my honor serving as the council president for the past year, I've learned something from each of you, and appreciate the teamwork that we've had, and would now ask for nominations.
It's Mayor, Council President Page, I move to nominate Councilmember James Page for President of the two thousand and twenty-three City Council.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, is there any discussion on the motions? Okay, let's have a clerk call rule.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
I'm staying.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
You're supposed to vote yes.
Yes.
I want you doing this willingly.
I'm honored, thank you.
Thank you, motion carries. Hey, special business item two, these are committee assignments. Councilmember Heller, are you willing to continue as a library liaison?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. I will do A C C E M. I will do Compass. I will do Valley Regional Transit, unless one of you wants to do it, I didn't think so. Also, Jenna is my alternate on that. If we need an alternate for quorum, on Compass, I can assign an alternate at any time, I have to give them, I think it's twenty-four hours notice. And then Boise Valley Economic Partnership, I think we had you on that bill. Is that working, you were able to continue that?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Councilmember Jacobs. And Councilmember Jorgensen is in an unnamed position, but she's got a couple of special projects going with Women and Children's Alliance and some traffic issues that she's working with Chief Allen and Forty-Second Street, so okay, that's, consider yourselves assigned. Next item, this is on page eighty-four. This G I flood study at times is wearing me out. Jenna, do you want to kind of give us a cut-to-the-chase briefing on what's happened? We're, we're two hundred thousand dollars into this, and, and we've been informed that they want another they want to increase the contract significantly, so.
Mayor, thank you, I think that you did cut to the chase exactly there. And, and the, the current contract amount is one million six hundred, and they're requesting to increase that to two point two at a fifty-fifty split. They did not have a line item that they were able to provide to the city. They, they did provide, it's on page two of the memorandum, their, their breakdown of their estimated budget as well as contingency. And they did note rationale for budget increases to include new policy requirements, including a required alternatives arrays, so having to look at different alternatives than was previously anticipated, and that's federal requirements for them as well as the environmental justice component that they're required to look at, which is federal requirements for them. There were federal wage increases that they noted, as well as unanticipated modeling cost. And I do apologize for the council, the, the details of what is entailed within those rationale, I am unable to give specifics. rationale, I am unable to give specifics as to, it is, I would like to note that they have requested a verbal direction by this Friday, whether or not the city thinks that, that proceeding forward would be something that the city could do. Certainly, the revised contract is not there and understandably, this is, this is quite a shift and I could ask for the project manager to come in and be able to articulate what is entailed within those items that they have noted. And with that, I stand for questions.
Yeah, I'm gonna let you, I'm gonna give you my perspective on this. Obviously, it's disappointing. Charlie's looked at the contract, they have the ability to raise the contract. One of the, for those of you that don't know what we're talking about, the, the G I flood study, seventy-four percent of the city of Garden City lies within the floodplain according to the latest FEMA maps that were, that were prepared and were adopted, when was it, maybe three years ago or so, something like that. Yeah, you know.
Give or take.
Cut me a little slack if I didn't get that, the ears right. And basically, the city qualified for a program through the U S Karmic, U S Army Corps of Engineers to do a study to, for the purpose of telling us how to mitigate that circumstance. So that all the almost all the geological experts tell us it's not an if we're gonna have a major flood, it's a when. So how do we protect the city? How do we help dissuade increased flood insurance premiums and some of those things? So we've got this. We entered into an agreement after a number of years, working on it, saved money for a long time to, to have the money to do this. So the purpose of this study, the deliverable is I come up with a mitigation plan and a, about a thirty-five percent construction plan, including the environmental component, which is a big part, part of any any plan that has to do with navigable rivers, of course. It would also qualify us for a thirty-five, sixty-five, sixty-five percent match on any improvements that we implement based on the study. So there's some real upsides to it. One of the challenges we have is we have three properties at the end of Fifty-Second Street that may be preventing us from running a structured remedy all the way through the system. And if that is part of the requirement to obtain those three properties, they're very high dollar properties would require eminent domain. The city isn't really equipped to deal with that, so we don't know if there's a workaround or not. And with that little bit of background, my recommendation is to give them a I'll call it a conditional verbal. And that would be, we would, over the period of the contract, come up with the extra, what is it, two hundred and thirty two thousand or some, something in addition of what we've already allocated. If they're gonna be able to complete a project for us with that, excluding the obligation to use eminent domain to take three properties that we can't afford to buy. I think the project, in my opinion, probably doable if we can get around that because there are techniques to build the protection along the riverbank that, that are not huge burns, you know, that take up a lot of lateral space. You can use bollards that are embedded in the ground with slats, so you can, if you know the water's coming up, you can insert, insert slats and, and do some protection there. There's there's opportunities with the fairgrounds property to create more storage which would reduce the water elevation in certain circumstances. There's, there's a lot to it, but it takes a lot of data, information and study to figure it all out, but at this point, council, we, they're asking us to make a decision before we have enough data to make it and, and the data we need is, is there a reasonable chance of success, success if we don't have those three properties at Fifty-Second Street in the river?
Mr. Mayor, could I, could I just add something regarding the contract? Because you did have me look at that, so I, I did. And it was executed in August of twenty-two, and I remember when I reviewed it in twenty-two, I, I did not love that contract, but it's a fed, the feds drafted it. You know, we didn't think that we'd get the feds to change the wording. So I didn't love it back when it was executed and I still don't love it because it says right here, article two. We go here, we're talking, we don't even have the project management plan yet, like what you just said. So it says, in the event more funds are needed to develop the project management plan, the government should provide the non-federal sponsor, so Garden City is the non-federal sponsor, with a written estimate of the amount of funds required from the non-federal sponsor, and within fifteen days, we have to cough it up. And that's what it says with no limitation on it. And so that, that's not an ideal contract, but that's what it said. We first were on the hook for twenty-five thousand dollars on this project management plan and now we're in it for two hundred thousand and then one more, so it's right in there, they could ask for more and we're obligated to provide it. There is a termination clause, there's a thirty-day termination clause, should the city want to go that route. But that is what the contract says.
Yep, you're, you're right, hard to negotiate with them.
Just gonna ask a question. So the rationale for budget increases is really weak. It's just no, no numbers.
No.
No specifics, ninety-eight percent increase, no detail. You know, they wage increases for a contract that they agreed to in August, you think that they're smart business people, whatever, they would already know what their increases were.
They're not business people.
Well, so, I guess I'm looking at that perspective. So what would prevent them from in five more months, they have another forty percent increase, and so where does it end, I guess would be my question, because I, based on this, very, I mean, it's really weak on detail. My, my understanding is that if we say no, we lose the two hundred, but we don't spend six hundred. So is that correct or?
That, well, that's correct and your, your analysis is correct as well. And I don't have a problem pulling the plug. I'd like to get this last bit of information because there are some things that I haven't done yet as a result of this, which is talk to our congressional staff. I mean, this is, this is crazy to do this with a small city like this and then put us in a trick bag. I mean, that's we, we sat upstairs in the conference room with the walla, walla folks, great folks, technical folks. Got the rah rah rah, this was a very highly placed plan, there's only I think there's only about a dozen of these nationwide that they authorize every year. This is congressional authorization to do this, for their part of the money. So it's, it's important to them. But I'd like to just get that last bit of, I'm not gonna, I can't obligate, it should be, it would be conditional and then you guys can pull a plug if you want to, but I'd like to get this. I'd like to put them on the hook to see if we even got a chance to do in this regardless of what the cost is, because you look at forty-six hundred parcels and changes in your flood insurance rate and it's, it's a big, big ticket number. And that's, I'd like to run it completely to ground before we make a final decision if you will allow me to do that. So absent any objection, I'll Jenna, I'll work with you on that and then when we get an answer, this will be back before you for a final determination. Fair enough?
Very good.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
As part of that conditional verbal, can we also condition it to have the project planner come in here and explain some of these details?
We can, they won't be able to, but we'd be happy to, we'd be happy to bring them in. And just, I think Mr. Wadums can confirm this, a a conditional verbal isn't exactly a contract, so, so I, I don't want you to feel like we're obligated, I just I want them to know that we'll take seriously, consider it. But it's got to have a chance of success and, and they need to tell us that upfront without buying three high-value homes and removing them and, and having the open-ended situation you have when you when you've entered into a condemnation action. If it's contested, which it would be, a jury awards those numbers and governments make terrible defendants in those kinds of suits and it's just, it's just something I couldn't in good conscience even recommend reconsider, it's too open-ended.
My intent would be to at least have them come in and understand that the city council is very focused on this and would like even though I expect their answers would be vague and, and hopeful to at least send a message that this council is very concerned about.
Yeah.
This change.
Yeah, it would just reinforce my disappointment to them on this. Okay.
Mayor. All right, excuse me, there, there is a hand raised by Adam Bass and, and I don't remember if Mr. Bass, whose agency he is a part of, I don't know if he is part of the Army Corps or not, but I do see that his hand is raised.
Hello, council members, can you hear me?
Well.
Okay, so.
We, can you identify who you're with?
Yeah, I'm Adam Bass, I'm with Boise River Outdoor Opportunities, who owns a business in the floodplain of Garden City.
You know, I, I'm not gonna take really testimony on this, we're there's a lot more to come and when we get to that point, if we need to have a public hearing, I certainly am willing to do that, but at this point, I just wanted to let the council know that the circumstance on this particular contract at this particular time under the deadline we have, otherwise I wouldn't be bringing this to you with a we need to hear something verbally by Friday. I mean, that's, that's you know, and you hear overruns constantly all the time, so. Anyway.
Understandable.
All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate your understanding. Happy to talk to you offline, too. You can contact my office. You know, this is two oh eight four seven two two nine two seven, that will get you right to my assistant and she can arrange an opportunity for us to talk on the phone or, or visit, that would work for you. Okay. Item number four, staff reports. Those are in your packet if you have questions for any of our staff. Of course, you're always at liberty to give them a call. If you have something you'd like to discuss with the council regarding them, you can do that now. Okay. Next item we have is the item we moved and I moved it to a place I don't like. So, council, I'm gonna ask you, let's move that down to the end of the agenda. We have people here that are likely don't need to go through that while we, we'll deal with the reconsideration.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we move new item F five to G six, essentially the end of the agenda.
Okay, thank you, and I apologize for that error on my part. Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All over favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next item on the agenda then will be G one, this is a reconsideration of the approval of B R E S R F Y twenty-twenty-two dash zero zero one four. This also known as the Sander application, the side and was approved as, as detailed in your packet. An interested party has asked for reconsideration, the council granted the reconsideration and now the matter is back before the council. So as we begin this process, council, we will be reviewing this non-denovo, so we will be utilizing the record that was created during the approval. And the, the record that was in place when the reconsideration request was granted. This is not a public hearing, the parties will have an opportunity to speak as I will outline in a few minutes. As we begin the process, does anyone need to declare a conflict on this issue? Hey, let the record reflect that no one has declared a conflict. The matter before you is whether to sustain or reverse the original approval of D S R F Y twenty-twenty-two dash zero zero one four. Your packet contains the alleged errors in the approval. Those will be discussed here in a few minutes. The applicant is here and will present from their perspective, the the, the original approval is still valid. Then the party asking for the reconsideration will have a final word, we're treating this just like a, an appeal, it's the process we're using, then we'll, we'll turn it to you for deliberation. I think is everybody in receipt of Mr. Waddams memos that he sent on this issue? Okay, just want to make sure we have all those. So you'll indulge me for just a minute, I need to find all this on my agenda so we can get started. Okay. Okay, um, with that, uh, we'll go ahead and proceed. Ms. Isley?
Mr. Mayor, at this point of order, there is a preliminary matter regarding a late submittal. Did you want to take that up first as a preliminary matter?
Well, okay, I, I kind of thought I did when I in- indicated that we're doing a non de novo, but if we need to be specific about that, Mr. Waddams happy to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just because, uh, there was something submitted today. There was an objection to that by the applicant's attorney, and I think that's preliminary matter that the council should.
You're, you're right. Okay, uh, now, so we did have a late submittal, uh, today. Uh, I, I haven't seen it, but, uh, um, we handle appeals typically in a non de novo fashion. So uh, if we take late submittals, then, uh, the other party doesn't have time to react to those. So that's why we have deadlines on submittals. So my recommendation to the council is to maintain a non de novo record for this hearing.
And, and Mr. Mayor, by may, uh, Mayor, members of the council, uh, Ms. Isley indicated she wanted to be heard on that matter. And of course, if she wants to be heard and the council and the mayor allow her to be heard, then I think Mr. Bauer could also have a right to be heard.
Okay, I just, uh, it's, it's the pleasure of the council, but I don't know if Mr. Bauer is prepared to deal with that or not, but, uh, uh, let me, let me do this. Um, um, Mr. Bauer, on behalf of the applicants has filed an objection. Is that correct? Yeah, I'm sorry, uh, for confusing this at the beginning.
Don't be drinking my water.
Just a minute.
Mayor Evans, Jeff Bauer, six oh one, West Panic in Boise, you know, um, we were more seeking clarification from Mr. Waddams and, and the planning director today. We don't have, you know, while, while we think it's improper, if, if Ms. Isley wants to show some slides, we don't think they're necessarily relevant to the council's decision tonight. So we don't need to make a bigger issue out of this than it is. Um, so I'll leave it at that. Um, we, we won't strenuously object at this point to, uh, these slides being introduced. Although it is a de novo, non de novo proceeding.
Okay, uh, so council, uh, given that, uh, let me know what you want to do. We can allow it in and let her share her slides or, or not.
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I would like to know from Mr. Bowers if he's, uh, in fact, then waving any, uh, chance to, um, counter those.
This is why we typically don't allow them because it.
Yeah, Mayor, it might be easier just to keep it out because it seems like that's the clear procedure here. Um, so thank you.
Okay, council, uh, pleasure to the council.
Mr. Mayor, uh, procedurally, this, this, uh, is, is non disputed as non de novo procedure. I would move to treat it as such.
I'll second that. A motion and second to continue. This is a non de novo hearing, meaning that nothing outside the record established at the original, uh, approval can be submitted. So any discussion on the motion? Here now, I'm sure, I'm fair to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, Ms. Isley, you may proceed.
Okay. Well, first of all, does that mean I get to show the four slides?
No, it means you don't.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
And if you would, uh, pay, be real friendly with that mic because it's hard to
Okay.
hear you that glass. Actually, we don't get any projection from your voice.
Okay, well, since I didn't get to talk about, um, what I had given to Jenna earlier, I just want to say that they were simply four images that speak directly to the two findings um, on my request for reconsideration. In fact, two of them, well, one of them is, um, a picture of their project. Another is a graph that was, uh, included in A C H D report about the project. Um, the other two are images that show how, um, inappropriate the building is in the neighborhood. So I really have a difficult time understanding, uh, why they don't want their own building shown, but that's here or there. Mayor Evans and council. My name's Belinda Isley. I live at two oh seven East thirty fifth Street, directly across the street from the project. The last time I was here, standing before you in November, you all did a very unexpected and brave thing by granting my request for reconsideration. So tonight, what I'm going to do is stand here and represent myself and a few neighbors that are here and you because you don't want this project anymore than the neighbors or the city planners or half the design review committee anymore than them. After that meeting, you asked me to reach out to the applicant in an effort to work through some issues. Since the applicant had said, quote, they wanted to come to a place that works for everyone. In good faith, I reached out to them. After a very long period of time and two communications with their attorney, they responded and we had a very interesting and I thought good ninety minute meeting. But at the end of, of it all, the concessions that they were willing to make nowhere met what the neighbors wanted. So we're at a standstill. Um, this was going to be photo number one, which is a, a rendering of their building. Um, it's our position. You don't know if you've looked at the building closely, but the building is a U shape. It's not a solid building. So the rooftop open area and then the inner courtyard, which is in the U is a lot of open space and we feel that to get fifteen apartments in five stories is kind of overkill. We ask that one story be removed, the density to remain the same and for them to mitigate parking by also tying three of the seven business rentals into being rented by residents in the building. So you would be able to see how much space they have to work with. And I have total, um, I'm totally confident that, um, their architect has the creative, the creativity to do such to reduce that building, one floor and keep the density the same. I'm still a little baffled by the city approving this on the grounds that finding two, that the proposed design adheres to standards for the protection, health, safety and general welfare. And the proposed design creates a sense of place and contributes to the uniqueness of the different districts and neighborhoods within the city. When at the same time, city attorney Waddams said, since health, safety and welfare is not defined and subsequently should not be applied on both of those counts, that to me it follows that the standard has not been met and it can never be met until such a time that it is defined. I find it difficult to understand how the council can approve a project and not approve a project using the same, using the same standards that are not defined. So I'd like you to be patient with me tonight because I'm not an attorney. I'm here just representing the neighborhood. I'm an artist. Um, so that is a brief description of where we came from and where we are tonight. And I will go into more detail about the two findings that you approved my request for reconsideration on. Finding two is safety. This project will indeed create unsafe conditions and be detrimental to the neighborhood. It will negative negatively affect us residents because of the number of cars that this project is going to bring to the neighborhood. Um, safety to me has four subheads. There's parking, there are sidewalks, there's cars and there's car trips. So we're going to talk about, um, we're going to talk about the parking. The city, the planners and half of the design review and all the neighbors, in fact, everyone with the exception of the applicants believe that this project is extremely underparked. And residents like myself, I know that it is underparked. I look out of my window on thirty fourth street and I see the amount of traffic that goes to push and pour from seven in the morning till about twelve thirty during the day. And then it, and then it dies off a little bit. So the, the applicants talk about a parking survey that the city did. Well, I never saw this parking survey. None of my neighbors that I've talked to have seen this parking survey. We didn't participate in this parking survey. And if the survey would have come to our neighborhood, you would have very different results than what the applicants say that, oh, the survey says that there's plenty of on-street parking. But the applicants did their own survey and they also said there's plenty of on-street parking. So is it just me or does that seem like a blatant conflict of interest? To do your own survey, to come up with results that you need to support your project? I had a conversation with Mindy Wallace. She's the planning supervisor at A C H D. And she had some really interesting things to say. Now, there's no current average daily traffic counts for thirty fifth south of, of car. But she said, as more developments come to this area, and we all know how many developments are either in the works, have been approved or, or ground has been broken. She said that all these projects assume that there will be on-street parking and they wrap those into their applications. But as more people go to our neighborhoods and need emergency services, ambulances, fire, police services, there's going to be more and more traffic and the streets do not belong to Garden City. That parking can be taken away at any time. Should the fire department determine that those streets need to be wider, that on-street parking is gone. Okay, we'll talk about sidewalks. You know, there, there are no sidewalks on the west side of thirty fifth. There is a little bit of sidewalk on the east side of thirty fifth, where the restaurant is. So once this project is built, there will be a hundred feet of sidewalk. There will be a curb cut in that sidewalk because the fifteen apartments and the seven business rentals need to access the parking, that they will be going in and out of that area. Um, but remember, there's a coffee shop there. So the patrons that go to that coffee shop are going to be, you know, involved in those, those cars coming in and out of that, of that, uh, parking garage. So the increased traffic is going to adversely impact the surrounding neighborhood and the congestion that is already on that street. It's going to create really unsafe interactions between the cars generated by the project and pedestrians and bicyclists. At this point, I was going to show you graph number two, which is a graph from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, their eleventh edition. And it has, um, land use, which, um, I'll talk you through this graph, multi-family housing, four to ten stories, which this falls into. Per dwelling unit, the average daily car trips, four and a half. Okay, now I, I want to take you back a minute because I have two studies that, that showed that car share, one car share will not mitigate the need for cars in that building.
Precisely, uh, I'm, I'm so sorry, but we're, we're getting into an area that was not part of the original record when the project was approved.
I'm sorry.
That's what, that's what non de novo means. So
Okay.
So, uh, the council really isn't in a position to consider the explanation you're making on things that you are prohibited from showing. It's the same, it's the same issue. I, I, that, that's, that's just the rules.
Okay, but I did, um, talk about parking being deficient in my request.
You did.
Yes.
You did.
Yes, I did. And so I thought that I was just, um, presenting more, um, evidence for that or more testimony for that.
You, I think the council's already gotten the message there, but, but if you're adding to the record, then you're adding to the record. So.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
However, I do believe that there's a parking study, a car share study in the packet.
She, she did reference that, but that wasn't, that isn't what she's talking about now. This is another one.
Okay.
So there is
Okay.
there is information in this, in the, in the packet. And if you want to reference that, you certainly can. Uh, uh, but, but we've got to stick to the record when this thing was heard the first time.
Okay.
Okay, because you're, you're your reconsideration request is based on errors the council made based on the approval that they made originally here. So we've got to stick to those issues. That's, that's the way the procedure has to work.
Okay, so that parking is deficient, I cannot expound on that.
You can reference what's in the packet. Uh, what page is that on?
The share or the, the code sightings regarding.
The share. We'll go with that because I know that's in there.
Do you have?
I thought you had it right in your hand. I'm sorry.
I, I apologize. No, I just recall getting right through.
Uh, so, so Mayor and council, I apologize. I thought that, um, I, on my re- request for reconsideration, that what I had in there, I could expand on.
Uh,
I was trying.
I'm reading, I'm reading, I'm reading it right now.
Okay.
And that I did say the vast majority of this building is residential and the small commercial space is incidental. And I with, along with neighbors and the majority of city council, fifty percent of the design review committee believe it is underparked. As such, it will recreate unsafe conditions, be detrimental to the neighborhood and negatively affect its residents, along with the many people who visit and recreate on a daily basis. And I was just trying to illustrate in a wider, uh, scope. I was trying to, to illustrate and wire scope that.
I, I, I understand.
Okay.
Uh, the challenge I have is the council. has indicated that you couldn't show your slides and you're just explaining your slides. So
Oh, okay, okay.
It's kind of hard for me to segregate those two things.
Okay, so I won't explain my slides.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I found page two forty-one begins the impact of car sharing on household vehicle holdings. Two forty-one in the packet.
Precisely, this is entitled, The Impact of Car Sharing on Household Vehicle Holdings, semicolon, Results From a North American Shared Use Vehicle Survey. So that
Mayor, Council, would the packet include the report that ACHD did with the applicant from for the applicants? Because this graph is in that report.
I'm gonna let Ms. Thornborough help us out here a little bit. It's a it's quite a large packet, so we haven't memorized it all.
And Mayor, for ease, I haven't found what I believe that Ms. Isley is referencing related to the ACHD comment, but I did find it in the record documents. And I if if the mayor and council.
What page is it? Huh?
In the prior.
Oh, in the prior packet. Okay. Okay, I'm sorry, Jenna. You can just tell us what it says.
Mr. Mayor, while she's doing that, just a point of order, there's really two packets. There's the main packet and then there's another packet that's hyperlinked. So there's the main packet and then there's a hyperlink packet and I think this is part of that.
Still considered part of the record?
Yes. Yes, it's on the website, considered part of the record.
Mayor, if I may, on that one point of clarification, today, when Ms. Isley sent the four slides that are not a part of the record, they were put up for ease of sharing them tonight. So that would be the one document that is not part of the packet. If you do go to the city's website, it should be the very last document. Thank you.
Okay.
May I continue?
You bet. Thank you.
So as you can see now with the graph, multifamily housing, which is four to ten floors and this falls under four and a half daily trips a day. The coffee shop without a drive-through during peak hours is thirty-two point two nine trips an hour. So there is only one entrance for all the traffic. And if we take this Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual information and multiply it by fifteen units, that is sixty-seven point five trips each day in and out of that one access point. The coffee shop, which in the chart that I had, had a figure of a thousand square feet, and I believe their coffee shop is about that. Will generate thirty-two trips per hour during peak times. Where are these cars going to park? They're going to park on the street. So this will create unsafe conditions. Remember, there are no sidewalks on that side of the street other than their hundred feet. There are no sidewalks on the other side of the street other than a little bit by the restaurant. This falls under safety. It is about postal delivery. Is that something I can continue with?
Mr. Mayor, a point of order, if you're looking for legal advice, all I can say is if it was discussed below, it could be discussed now. So so if it wasn't discussed previously, then I don't think it should. I don't think it's fair.
Okay.
Not to know.
All right. Um, all right, then we will move on to the other finding, finding three. The proposed design creates a sense of place and contributes to the uniqueness of the different districts and neighborhoods within the city. The proposed design does not create a sense of place or contribute to this in any shape, form at all. Unfortunately, you cannot see and I can't explain. But the height of this building is nine feet less than the tall tree on their property. It is massive, and I totally understand why they would not want you to see these slides. Talking about, we talked about footprint. This building covers almost the entire one hundred by hundred and foot lot, which renders that hundred by a hundred and foot, hundred and fifty foot lot impermeable. And as we strive to become better stewards of our land, including water quality, storm drainage, we're all moving towards less lot coverage, not more. I'm really struggling to to decide what I can and can't talk about. All of the other buildings in the area are less than forty-five feet. That includes buildings that are in the pipeline to be built but have been approved. I really wish you could see those photos because it would become self-evident to you that this building in no way creates a sense of place. It does not contribute to the neighborhood or the district. I really guess that's about all I can say other than you know, the stakes are high here. And I hope you do not become silent about something that is so important to the neighborhood and to the city, because once this is built, there's no going back. The applicants told me when we met that they imagined that they would not be the tallest building in the foreseeable future. So take that to heart, Council.
Hey, there are in the
Any questions?
Well, I'm just going to comment that in the packet, there are pictures, renderings of the building.
Round two, Mr. Mayor, members of council, it starts on page two hundred and seventy. It looks like a pro- thereabouts and it goes on through several pages where you have the references and that is part of the record.
So that is part of the record. All right. Any questions, Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Ms. Hasley, thank you for your time today. I just am taking notes here and the 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 thing that needs to be found today is how the council aired. And so I want to make sure that I'm understanding your points succinctly. Your, I believe I heard you say that the council aired and it's finding that this project would be a detriment to safety because of the lack of sidewalks, the curb cut in the sidewalk, potentially conflicting with cars conflicting with pedestrians going to the coffee shop and car trips. Was was that it for the safety component? Okay.
Well, that I could talk upon.
I understand. Thank you. And for the second sense, the second area that you felt that the council aired in our finding that the project gave a sense of place. And your rationale, if I understand it correctly, is that the the project doesn't create a sense of place because of the scale and the footprint being too large. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Oh. Precisely. One more time, I I apologize, but I'm not positive. I captured. What was your estimated car trips?
I'm sorry, what?
What was your estimated car trips? You had done some math there and I didn't catch your final estimation.
Okay, so at fifteen units and four point five, that's sixty-seven and a half trips a day. That's out of the parking garage that and the coffee shop was, oh, you don't need that. It's thirty-two. Yeah. That doesn't include the the on-street parking generated by the seven business rentals that don't have parking inside the garage.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Are there other questions?
Think you've covered them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Oh.
I apologize. One more time. Ms. Hasley, you did make reference to to the building's design of being a U shape, but I I did not catch why that's a detriment either in the safety or the
Okay, it was just well. Okay, well, you let me talk about it. So I'll talk about it again. It was because when you had asked me to meet with the applicants to see if we could come to an agreement of some things that maybe concessions they could make. And the neighbors had said to that they wanted a floor removed. And so in looking at the building, because it's not a solid building, it's U-shaped. And so the the interior space is open, you know, from the fifth, sixth floor or fifth, however tall it is, all the way down to the ceiling on the first floor. So there's a lot of open space, like I wouldn't call it wasted space, but there's a lot of open space that you could work with to take a floor off and put the same density, the same number of apartments in there, but have it a floor lower.
I see. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Hey.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Hey, Mr. Bauer, are you representing? Are you both?
Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Wait a minute. No, I thought I did you have? Did you have a final comment? I thought I saw you hesitating when you left the microphone and heading back to, all right. I beg your pardon. I think, okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor and Council members, thank you. My name is Matthew Clark. My partner, Bree Katz, and I own the property at two ten East Thirty-Fifth Street, located in the heart of Garden City's Searl Mitchell Live, Work, Create District. Our project is called The Saunder, and it's a mixed-use building designed with our architect Kathy Sewell, specifically to serve the stated purpose of the neighborhood, including fifteen apartments, seven artist workspaces, and one retail space. We received approval from the city council in October. We're back here today, obviously, because of the reconsideration in November. And we weren't permitted to respond, as is normal, I guess, to that request in November. But we did submit our memo in response, as instructed. By the fourteenth, no rebuttal was submitted to that memo. We obviously would have prepared something different if new evidence was going to be allowed today. So that's why the hubbub around these extra photos. Frankly, our objection to them is just that it it's a rendering of our building and Ms. Isley's house and an empty lot in front of Ms. Isley's house, where there will be another building that's four stories with a rooftop deck that's already been approved, the Shavasana Project. And it very much changes the impact of the photo if everything is taken into consideration. So just so you know, that's what that whole situation was about. Ms. Isley's request, as you know, dealt with numbers two and three in our required findings, and we believe that our project still meets all seven of the required findings for our approval. Finding one is the proposed design is in conformance with the purposes of the zoning district and all dimensional regulations of that district. The Saunder will be a mixed-use building in a C-two zone that complies with all dimensional regulations for a building of its type in this zoning district, including proper setbacks and proper lot coverage. Finding two is the proposed design adheres to standards of for the protection of health, safety, and general welfare. The project is designed to support health, safety, and welfare of the community. There will be a code-compliant sidewalk and landscape buffer along East Thirty-Fifth Street, which will provide for a better pedestrian connection than what currently exists on the site. The project's proximity and its consideration for pedestrians and bicyclists encourages activity in connection to the green belt. The open-air courtyard, important to the design, provides a landscaped common area for residents and visitors. And the rooftop garden, including a community greenhouse, will provide additional healthy green space. There's a residential pathway around the lot to act as a pedestrian walking trail and pet park. The design includes new trees to be planted along all four sides of the property. Our proposal is for a development that is not car-centric and instead focuses on the pedestrian, bicyclists, and other alternate forms of transportation. Every apartment has a parking space and access to a shared car. The study referred to earlier that is in the packet talks about elsewhere where there is onsite car-share service available, reducing per household car ownership to as much as point two four cars per unit, which is far less than what what we have parked for this project. Also, there's some some conversation about the crossover at the sidewalk and the curb cut. The parking in the garage is for the residents and the car share for the residents. So there's there's actually very little traffic across that threshold, just to be clear. Finding number three, the proposed design creates a sense of place and contributes to the uniqueness of the different districts and neighborhoods within the city. Our application is in conformance with the vision set forth in the comprehensive plans, live, work, create, future use designation, and the adopted Thirty-Fourth Street Streetscape Plan. Ms. Isley's primary concern is clearly the height and scale of our design in a C-two zone where the city has established that there is no height or density limit. It's why we purchased this property with this project in mind, because of the zoning that exists. The Saunder will be a five-story building with a rooftop deck. There are a number of projects that size or bigger approved for construction in the neighborhood. The Shavasana Project right across the street, which is both next to and behind Ms. Isley's property, includes four stories and a rooftop deck, sixty feet tall. The Casino Beach includes a section seventy feet tall. Ours is seventy-two, and there's a bit of extra height because we made it a requirement that handicap access goes all the way to the rooftop deck and the community greenhouse. So our tower is a little higher, but it's five stories plus that bit that gets us to that seventy-two, two feet higher than Casino Beach. Finding four, the proposed design improves the accessibility of development to non-motorized and public modes of transportation. As noted, will provide a new sidewalk on Thirty-Fifth Street, further enhancing a currently underdeveloped streetscape. Extensive bicycle and scooter parking is provided for both residents and the public to utilize in an effort to promote neighborhood walkability. Additionally, the proposed car share for tenants reduces the need for every resident to own a vehicle, thus reducing the need for parking and vehicle trips to and from the site. Finding five, the proposed design supports a development pattern in nodes rather than strip commercial along arterial corridors. Combination of commercial and workspaces and residential units and the amenities provide a successful approach for creating a mixed-use development. The project helps to establish a new urban space that contributes to the vision of the Live, Work, Create District. That contributes to the vision of the live-work-create district. Finding six, the proposed design supports a compact development pattern that enables intensification of development and changes over time. Again, we were required to provide a design that supports a compact development. And enables intensification of development and changes over time. That's very much what we've done. By designing fifteen living spaces, seven artist workspaces, and a street-level retail space to the property. The commercial or the the workspaces and the retail space are not incidental to the project. They're very integral. There are twenty-four spaces in the building, fifteen of which are residential, and it's intended to create community. Finding number seven is the proposed design provides outdoor spaces and landscaping compatible with the southwest Idaho climatic conditions. And encourages pedestrian activity. Our landscape designers made sure to use regionally appropriate trees and plants. And again, the design focuses on pedestrians and bicycles. We believe our project will come to be known. As a highlight of the Cyril Mitchell Live Work Create District. We hope that you'll allow us to move forward today. To discuss the specific legal positions we're taking in this matter. Our attorney, Mr. Bauer. Any questions for me before we move on?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Clark, thank you.
Yes.
You mentioned the live-work-create. In the comprehensive plan. I'm assuming you read that prior to construction. So when I read it, it seems to contradict. Your building. So I'm just gonna read this for you because I'm I'm missing. Your footprint and what your development versus how it relates to. The live-work-create. So it says, regulation should be primarily through form, not uses. Including maintaining the existing subdivision pattern of small lots. And limiting the maximum building footprint or square footage of a building in relation to lots ups. Your building pretty much takes up that entire lot. Large-scale development that consolidates lots and or allows larger-scale industrial or commercial uses should be restricted. So when I read this, it contradicts what you've just said about how that fits in with the surreal live work. And it's kind of ironic because Cyril Mitchell helped write this. And so. So I'd like you to kind of address that because I'm not getting the correlation of how this fits in with. That district and what it's supposed to look like in the size of it. So that's that's question number one. The second question I'd like you to answer is. How much engagement did you have with everybody that lives in that community prior to your design? And did you, because it doesn't seem like we've heard testimony that, and you mentioned that. You want to be collaborative with the neighborhood and things like that, but we've also heard from the neighbors that said, we didn't hear anything. From you prior to the design and the development in the architecture plans where they can give feedback. It's like, no, this thing's really. Too tall, it's it's too big, whatever, and some of those taken into account. I like the design. I think it's attractive. It's a good building. I do tend to think that it's. It doesn't fit in with. The comprehensive plan as it's written, or with other develop, or with other buildings in that district. And so I just, I'm kind of torn. So for me. It contradicts the comprehensive plan.
I'll take a first stab, Mayor Evans, council member. You know. I think what the most important thing to remember in this proceeding is, and I'll and I'll get to this in my main presentation, is we're here with a really limited focus, and that's. Is there a basis for reconsideration? And to find that there needs to be. A insufficiency in the decision that's already been written. And your question is a great one. I think it goes to the original approval. Of the project, which which has already transpired October twenty-fourth. But to answer the question, the comprehensive plan, as you all know, is a guidance document. What is binding here is the C two zoning regulation. So. This property and Miss Isley's are are zone commercial, a an intensive zone. And this project meets the applicable dimensional standards for the C two zone. And and another important thing, I believe, in this case, is that. The design review criteria that apply to this application. Don't actually take the comprehensive plan into consideration. For instance, there's no finding that says. Is the design compliant with the comprehensive plan? It looks to the dimensional standards of the C two zone, which it is. I'm sure I could go through the the comp plan and find other criteria that we do meet. I I think, you know, Matt will will touch on. Artist Studios integration of living and working units. We do meet those elements of the comprehensive plan and. Certainly, no project meets every element of every comprehensive plan. That's not the intent. But we do meet a lot of them, and most importantly, we do meet the the C two's dimensional standards. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I I I'd just like to add. That we were, we discussed both through the design review process and the initial approval of the project. That we were not using the specific overlay that then was created and has since been. Removed for the district because we were trying to create more, we're trying to create artist live workspaces, but more of them. In accordance with the C two zones, the dimensional limitations of the C two zone. So we're sort of hybridizing purposes and meeting all necessary thresholds by doing that. With regard to whether or not we we spoke to the neighbors prior, we absolutely did, and I don't, I don't believe Miss Isley represented that we. Didn't speak to them. I had a conversation with Miss Isley right in front of the property. Well before we got to this position, we've talked to the neighbors on all sides. And across Chindon and in the greater neighborhood and have had have been to many meetings with arts organizations and the Garden City. Placemaking Fund, and there are a lot of people very excited about the project. There are also some people in the neighborhood who have concerns about the size of it, and we've had lots of conversations. With them about that and considered a number of alternatives. Originally, when we had this design, it was, there was a a bigger concept in mind, and we've brought it down to five stories. Believing that that will be a sort of sweet spot going forward for where the neighborhood looks to be going, based on the other things approved in the neighborhood. And because there is no height limit in the zone.
Okay, other, okay, any other questions, Mr. Clark, right now? Okay.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, Jeff Bowers, six oh one, West Bannack in Boise. I'm a land use attorney with Givens Persley and here tonight on behalf of the applicant team. We have reviewed the draft decision that's in your packet tonight, and before I, you know, bore you with legalese, I'll say. We agree with the staff report, all of the analysis of the appropriate criteria. As well as the conditions of approval. So we are in agreement with with staff's report that's been prepared, that draft decision document. As mentioned, we did submit a detailed memo on several of these issues I'm going to discuss. I I will not repeat them all. I'll just touch on some high points. But if there were any questions, I'm happy to answer them. So first and foremost, you know, we are here tonight on a, you know, quote-unquote reconsideration. And in, you know, doing my clients, the the service that they they deserve, we have to generally. Generally object to this proceeding as a whole. We do not believe that reconsideration is appropriate under the circumstances here. And and primarily, the basis for that argument is that design review approval, which this is. Is not subject to reconsideration under the Local Land Use Planning Act and. To give you just a little bit of detail, what Lupa says, and when I say Lupa, I mean Local Land Use Planning Act, it says. Reconsideration is appropriate for applications that are required or authorized by this act. So. If Lupa says design review is required or authorized, you can have reconsideration. Lupa does not ever specifically mention design review. So our position is that. Reconsideration is not appropriate because design review isn't conceptualized by Lupa. Lupa addresses zoning, land uses, you know, conditional use permits, things like that. But design review should really be about that design. What does a building look like? Not how tall is it? What are the setbacks? Those are in the zoning code. That's already been decided. So that's our first point. And the way we get around that error that has been created by this proceeding is just to affirm. The decision that has already been rendered. That way, you know, my clients, although some delay and some interest rates are affecting us poorly, we aren't. Otherwise harmed, our vested right remains in place. So second. Even if we assume that reconsideration does apply to design review. Its scope is very limited by Lupa. So what Lupa says is that. A written decision has to be, well, one, in writing. Two, it has to provide the factual background. And three, it has to provide the applicable criteria and analyze those criteria. So in this case, this council did issue a written decision, very well done. Your staff does a great job, very comprehensive, on October twenty-fourth. That decision, again, addressed all of the background facts, all of the criteria, and found that this project met them. None of the criteria were punted on, as to say that they weren't analyzed or ignored. Each one was addressed, including conditions two and four with respect to health, safety, and welfare, and sense of place. So there is a decision that finds this project met those standards. So going back to what Lupa allows, if we are in a proper reconsideration, Lupa says. The purpose of reconsideration is to decide if that decision was sufficient. Again, I in writing, analyze the applicable criteria. So in this case, because we have a sufficient decision. This reconsideration proceeding should just affirm that. It's not a forum to reway facts or reanalyze the criteria. You know, Mr. Clark touched on this, and this is my third point. This project meets all the applicable criteria for the C two zoning district. And for that reason, you know, we asked for you to affirm the decision below. That's the proper course of action. And I'd be happy to stand for any questions that the council might have.
Question, Mr. Bowers.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
I do have a couple of questions. One. In good faith, it appears that Miss Isley reached out to negotiate potential modifications or changes to this application. Where did that stall or was there any concessions that were identified at all?
Mayor Evans, Councilmember Jorgensen, you know, subject to our general objections to, this would be, I think. Additional evidence outside the record, but I'm happy to answer the question. Met once on Zoom. I believe their conversation lasted for an hour plus. The concessions my clients are willing to offer are to restrict some of their. Studio spaces to tenants only. I think they're willing to do half of those to, again, decrease further. The project's parking requirements. You know, the project simply doesn't pencil with a floor taken off. It's it's doesn't work. We, the U design is critical, that open-air courtyard. You see that very common in Garden City. A lot of those buildings up off Veterans have the courtyard design so that. Every unit has windows. I think that's critical. We aren't trying to pack density in. It's a nice building. But that's really the only concession we're willing to to make. And I'd have to check with Mr. Clark, but I think. If the council wanted to add a condition that three of those workspaces had to be leased to a tenant, we would accept that condition voluntarily.
Would you consider? If the estimated. Car trips are. Factual or close to being doubled in that small area based on this one. Application, would you consider that a safety concern?
Mayor Evans, Councilmember Jorgensen, thank you for that question. I I meant to talk about that. Vehicle trips, I do not believe are an issue in this in this application. So. C two zoning, no height restrictions. We're well below the density. We could be adding a lot more vehicle trips here as a matter of right. The question, I think, on design review is, does the design specifically cause a safety concern? And in this case, no, we do not believe it does.
One, one last question. And when I view this, obviously factoring the the legal standpoint. The other consideration, and I give a lot of weight to residents that are in the the area and that are impacted. Then there's. Perception by quite a few folks that wrote in that they're concerned about their property value, about the the safety. And that it will create a negative impact to their neighborhood. What is your response to that?
Yeah, Mayor Evans, Councilmember Jorgensen, obviously sensitive to that. Ultimately. Like Mr. Clark said, I think this project is going to be a gem for the district. Good projects increase property values. Whether the, whether the value relates to single-family home or not, I'm not sure, but I think it will increase. The the value of property in the district, no question. Yeah.
One last question, and you may not be able to answer this, so the applicant may need to come up. There is written testimony from a Miss Falkenstein, I believe, and it's on page two thirty-six of the packet. And she's writing in objection. She does not object to the density. But she, the thing that jumped out at me that somewhat is concerning is. A citing Miss Sewell's. Remarks in rebuttal. And that is that when Garden City runs out of street parking, the city can pay to build parking spots. So the question is. Was the, you know, the the statement was made, this site was selected because of the heights. Limitation or lack of limitation. Was this application drafted assuming or with the knowledge that there were. Issues with our code that would allow them to somewhat. Abuse the parking requirements.
Mayor Evans, Councilmember Jorgensen, I do invite Matt to come up and talk about the intent. But they consulted with me, actually. I believe after their first design review meeting about parking. And the discussion we had was what are Garden City's parking standards for a mixed-use development? And we looked at the code and specifically Section eight, four D, five B, which is the mixed-use parking. And our interpretation of that code provision was that there was no standard for mixed-use development like this. It was. Based on. Four criteria, parking study, on-street parking, the type of development, the other type of use. And our discussion was that. This type of project could provide the the number of spaces. That the zoning administrator or the council agreed was appropriate. And we went forward with that, and it was approved. On October twenty-fourth with that number of parking spaces. And, you know, I haven't been intimately involved, but I understand. There's, there's been a court case involving the city's parking standards and that they were maybe inherently. A subjective and can't be used as a basis for denial. I I understand the logic there, but I believe our project meets the code for mixed-use development. And was previously approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
You mentioned C two zoning. In our previous deliberation on this back in November. So the development is ninety-something percent residential. Right? And it's got a little tiny piece of commercial which allows it to be mixed use. Is that right? What I just, I'm. Just based on the plan, it looks like the square footage, there's a little. Or just tell me what it is.
Hey, we we gotta get this all on the record.
Mayor Evans, Kathy, do you want to come up? Or Matt?
We can't do that.
Okay.
Answer me, what percentage is commercial versus residential?
In terms of door count, it's eight units of workspace and and retail and fifteen of residential. There are different sizes, and there's a lot of common area in the building. So I don't know what percentage of the total building is. Residential, but it's, but there are eight other spaces that are non-residential.
I just want to define the term. So. So we've got the apartments are residential, is that correct? Right? And then are the live-work-create considered? Commercial or are they considered, what what are they considered? What, what are they considered? So I, cause I'm, I think I'm mixing the two up.
Sure, their workspace. So it's, it's like the idea of the live work, sorry.
You're all right.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and council members, uh. The idea was, uh, cause there are a lot of other, um, developments in the neighborhood that have the lives, living space. And then a separate entrance, separate workspace that is on the same property. This is the same idea, but in order to create a sense of community among the artist workspaces. The seven artist workspaces are all around the second floor courtyard. And then there are fifteen living units up above. So the idea is that people that live in those fifteen units. Come down and work. That's our plan. We're going to live in one of the units and have, uh, art, uh, and you know. Shared idea space in one of these little units around the courtyard.
They should be, I guess my question is, is are those seven spaces considered, I guess, commercial? Because if you don't, if a resident doesn't, you'll rent them, I guess. And that make, is that what makes it commercial, I guess? Is what I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, I mean, they're designed to the workspace standard that was in the overlay and designed to be small enough that they didn't trigger. Uh, additional parking requirements, um, cause that's the idea. So. I don't know how, I mean, they're, they're workspaces, they're not residential spaces. I don't know.
That helps.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mayor Evans, uh, council member there, uh, that, that's your. You know, internal, uh, questioning here is precisely the reason why I think the term mixed use exists. Cause it's, they're hard to categorize. They aren't going to be, uh, you know, true commercial in the sense that. You know, we don't expect someone to run them to run a hamburger joint and put in a, you know, a hood and that sort of thing. So. Um, they are mixed use. They're meant to integrate with the residential.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, further questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
Noting the objection, uh, that Mr. Bowers has expressed, uh. In which she states that this is reconsideration, isn't the proper form here. Uh, nonetheless, we are proceeding, uh, according to our appeal. Uh, basically, uh. Standards as far as protocol goes, and that would afford Ms. Isley a chance for any rebuttal you want to make as a, as, uh, as a final. Comment to the council before they move to deliberation.
Mayor, council. Yes, the vast majority of this building is residential. It's a pretty simple mathematical thing you can do. Vast majority is residential. Um. I would like to say that the initial report that the city did. Um, about this project pointed out vast, vast parking. You can't hear me?
Can now.
Okay. The initial report that the city did about this project pointed out the vast parking deficiencies in it. Um, so to say that, uh, this wasn't brought to the applicant's attention is false. I would also like to say that. A floor taken out of this building. With leaving the same density of rentals in this building. Would definitely pencil out. It will pencil out more than building another floor. It will probably save them a couple million dollars. So the fact that the courtyard has to be there for this to pencil out is a fallacy, a huge one. A two hundred, a two million dollar one. So the last time I stood before you back in November, each of you stepped up to the plate. By granting my request for reconsideration, you screamed loud and clear. That you did not want this project and you did not believe in this project as it stands. So. I would ask you to once again stand firm in what you know is going to be right for the neighborhood and the city. Is it going to be easy? Probably not. Applicants. May take action. They men, they may spend a lot of money with Mr. Bauer. Or they may decide that a little redrawing. Is the best way to spend their time and energy. And money. So Mr. Bauer said that you were wrong in granting my request and he alleges the law is on his side and the applicant's side. And it may be, I don't know, I'm not an attorney and I don't have an attorney. But I want you to think about a few things right now. Want you to think about slavery. And I want you to think about before nineteen ninety-four, beating your wife was legal. And I want you to think about segregation. Just because something is legal, does that make it right? History has shown that it does not. And with that, I stand for any further questions that you have.
Any final questions, counsel? Thank you. Hey, uh, Mr. Wadums, uh, as we enter deliberation, would you, uh, counsel, the council? Uh, on the protocol here.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I, I do have a legal memorandum in your packet. Is that on page one oh eight, starting on page one oh eight? Talks about, uh, you know, it's my legal, um, advice. I, I think the council can either affirm the previous decision, reverse the previous decision, remand it back to design review, I suppose, or, or modify it. Uh, modify it, reverse it or vacate it. The council would have to decide that the council made some kind of error in the initial decision. Uh, that the council aired in their findings on one of the, at least one of the seven factors. The complication in this case is we're dealing with an old version of code that we have a judicial determination that was subjective. And so, uh, what my legal advice is, is if there are no objective reasons. Outlines to deny this, then it needs to be, uh, an approval. And that's not a per, I mean, that's not, uh, I'm not opining on whether I think this is a good application or not. I'm opining on the fact that that's the legal standard that we have to work with in this particular application. And if this becomes a denial, um, there needs to be an objective basis or Mr. Bauer, I'm going to be dealing with Mr. Bauer in court. And I think that's just the reality. So, um, uh, that's my legal opinion. Uh, I think those are the decisions, but if the council wants to deny this application or modify it. Aside from the concession that I heard, um, if you needed an objective basis to do so.
Okay, uh, with that, uh. Writers before the council, uh, for deliberation.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I have a couple of questions from Mr. Waddens.
Okay.
So, um. Alluding to the concession that was indicated. Could we further require a modification of more tenant inhaleded?
If you, uh, Mayor, uh, Councilmember Jorgensen, if the council believes they aired on one of those findings and that's, uh, objective finding or an objective standard, then perhaps. But we would need to point specifically to an objective standard. Uh, it was a seven, there's seven standards here, um, for approval. It may be, it's lost my place. Starts on page one fifty-two. Um, we are dealing with. Let me see here, we are dealing with eight Garden City code, eight, uh, six B three. And I think there's seven findings, um, some of which a court of law is determined to be subjective. So you would have to find one of these findings. Um, it would have to be objective. And there would have to be a finding from the council that they aired initially. And so, and so they're going to modify that finding. Uh, I think that's. To be realistic, I think that's kind of a stretch. Um, I can explain my opinion on Mr. Bauer's, um, arguments that this is, is not under Lupa. There are some legal reasons for him to make that argument and he's just preserving his record and, and making a record for it. They have to go to court. So I understand that, um, that's good lawyering. Um, I, I respectfully disagree with them. Uh, I do believe that this design review is under Lupa. I understand his argument, um, but I fed it and I just respectfully disagree with them. But ultimately that would be up for, up to a judge to decide. Uh, Mr. Bauer would make his argument. I would make my argument and then a judge would decide. And whenever you go to a judge. There's a risk that they're going to disagree with you. So, um. I, I feel solid about that this is under Lupa, but he does have an argument. But to answer your question, Councilmember Jorgensen, you would need an objective basis, uh, to modify your finding. You'd have to find that you, uh, the council aired in the initial decision and then you would have to find something in objective and. Objective and not subjective and eight, six, B, three, uh, to make that, uh, basis, to make that, um. Modification.
So then, Mr. Waddens, my, my next question to you is similar to what I asked of Mr. Bowers. Um, under code eight, six, B, three. Uh, one of the findings is, uh, the proposed design shall not create an adverse impact on the surrounding neighborhood.
So I think, and I, I can double check, I think that is the new version and not the old version. Right? So, uh, that's the new version, but this is being analyzed under the previous code. And so that's the problem. Um, I mean, not necessarily a problem, but that's the legal issue. Um, that this application was submitted before the code, the code was changed. And so. Uh, the eight, six, B, three, as it existed then, is different than the eight, six, B, three that exists now. I think that the council in its wisdom has, uh, corrected the deficiencies in eight, six, B, three. But that's, uh, we're, we're under the old version of the code on this application.
So, Mr. Waddens, here's another question. This, this one may be way out there. So read and type. Um, if, is there a vehicle in which potentially, um, an HOA? Could limit the number of vehicles allowed for ownership?
Well, I, you know, HOA, CCNRs, that's a contractual civil issue, I suppose of. If there are CCNRs that say that and, and people agree to it, then, I mean hypothetically, I suppose yes, but I'm not hearing that that's the situation here. I think that too, uh, Councilmember Jorgensen, I think that too would be a stretch.
Thank you, Mr. Waddens.
With all respect to everybody.
Hey, uh. For the deliberation. Well, if we're at motion time, uh. The options are to affirm the decision that's in place currently. Uh, or deny it. And if you deny it. You've got to have an objective. Um, reference in our code to do so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, just, just some of my own thoughts and I welcome the thoughts of my colleagues. Um, you know, here, we're, we're here about, uh. Uh, the question of whether we aired in, in, in two of our findings, uh, so safety. Um, Ms. Isley's, uh, talked about sidewalks, parking, uh, excessive car trips. Um, I appreciate the argument. I hear the argument. I, I don't think it rises to meet, um, the definition of council error. I, I take issue respectfully, Ms. Isley, with, um. Uh, our vote to reconsider this, uh, constituting screaming loud and clear that we did not want the project. I think that, um, our decision to reconsider was, um. A thoughtful decision, uh, to determine whether we committed error and we wanted to hear. Your input on that, which I think you, you gave, uh, quite nicely. With regard to the second finding of sense of place. You know, this, this is sense of place kind of cuts two ways. And, um. Few things give more sense of place than saying the tallest building next to the coffee shop. That's a sense of place. You, if you're describing where you live and you say, I live in the tallest building, it's across from the coffee shop. That. Is a sense of place. Doesn't require you to look at an address. You can turn down the street, see the tallest building. Is it across from the coffee shop? Yes, it is. I've arrived at the place I wanted to navigate. Um, and I realize that we all use Google Maps nowadays, so it's kind of tongue in cheek. But for a standard of finding that's, um. A little bit confusing and subjective, I would argue that it does create a sense of place. And with that, I'd like to, um. Hear the thoughts of my colleagues.
Um, President of the Council, I do believe that there, um. Notwithstanding what we've heard this evening, I believe either inadvertently or on purpose, this application has come through. Um, and certainly leveraging gaps in our code. Um, and that's, that's, I, I frankly, that doesn't feel good. And candidly, I think that if this does go in front of a magistrate, that they're going to weigh that and factor it. In the consideration and recommendations. Um, this. And I will concede that, you know, in parts of the code that. Frankly, we don't have much room to stand on as far as the height. Um, and I would not even attempt to argue that. The, the parking is something that I believe. Could be defended. And when it is significantly under parked. Um. And there's been a lot of public discussion regarding parking. And the desire of the city to change its, our requirements. For the safety and the betterment of the city, um, I think that would also win in. Uh, I think that, uh, the, the lack of consideration and willingness to capitulate and afford more parking. That's a, uh, another concern. And I think that that also would be factored in any kind of litigation. Um, so I understand the, the position and, uh, you know. I understand how we have voted previously. And there's still enough here. And I was still have enough confidence in, in the outcome that I, I don't feel compelled to approve this.
Hey, further discussion? Any further questions of Mr. Waddens? Hey, what's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move to deny the application.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
No.
Councilmember Heller?
No.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor votes no. Do I have another motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to sustain or affirm the decision, uh, pre, the prior decision, D S Y. Um, D S R F Y twenty twenty-two. Zero zero one four, commonly known as the Saunder.
Hey, I've got a motion. Wait a second.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion on the motion. Here now, clerk call roll.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
No.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I move for a five minute break?
You may. We'll, uh, recess, uh, reconvene in about five minutes. Thank you. Okay, thank you. We're back on the record. Um. We are at item G two. This is a second reading of ordinance. And thirty-three, that's point two. I'm going to have Mr. Waddens, uh, just, uh, any updates he had. N thirty-three, that's point two. I'm gonna have Mr. Waddams, uh, just any updates he has on these as we go through these next uh four items. So uh, when you're ready, Mr. Waddams.
Yes, sir. So is this, what is between him? Okay. Yeah, I did have a couple of updates, uh, mayor and council, and so if I could just reference uh my updated memo. My memo on this packet starts on three sixty and I added a couple of things to the memo based on the conversation during the first reading. Uh, one of the things, so the summary is that now, starting on page three sixty-one, um, third full paragraph in is the added content, uh, the previous cut, the other content was from the previous memo, but uh, you know, as we put on the record last time, that looking at these ADUs is trying to find some more options for affordable housing. I reference a a newspaper article regarding what Meridian has been doing. Meridian is also struggling with what their ADUs look like. Meridian is also struggling with whether there should be tiny homes or prohibition against tiny homes. And then I was asked to do a brief constitutional analysis, so I have a constitutional analysis in there. And if the long and the short of it is, is there has to be some kind of nexus between the government of interest. Um, and I go through all the legalese. I think it's an intermediate scrutiny of this, um, if the ADU thing was ever challenged in court. Uh, it'd probably be under this constitutional standard called intermediate scrutiny, but I I was asked about a little constitutional analysis, so I put that in here. Um, and we also made a couple of minor changes to the actual ordinance, and so I summarized the changes on three sixty-two of your packet, and I'll just put that on the record now. Uh, there was a conversation during the first reading whether ADU should only apply this ordinance, this regulation should only apply to residential or if it should also apply to non-residentials. Uh, I think at this point in time, staff's recommendation is that ADUs only apply to residential properties and and not non-residential properties. So we attempted to specify that in the actual ordinance. Uh, I put in a definition of what incidental means, because I get to see people, if we don't have a definition of what incidental means, then uh people, if you don't have a definition, people are going to argue about it, right? So now the definition of incidental means accompanying the residential use and the structure on site that does not constitute the majority of the use of the site and in connection with the uses in the structure on the site. Uh, Ms. Thornborough came up with that definition. I'm I'm sure we could come up with something else if the council does not like that. And then I put it into the mayor's point, uh, that this is uh, this is not going to supersede CCNRs, that the CCNRs are more restrictive regarding ADUs than the CCNRs would control over the code, and so we put in a provision like that. So if you look at the actual ordinance as it's drafted for the second reading, that starts on page three sixty-four of your packet. You can see on page three sixty-four, we talked about private restrictions. That's referencing specifically CCNRs on page three sixty-five of your packet. And one of the things I was hoping that maybe uh, we can get some um instruction from the council tonight is whether you like these restrictions on ADUs. So looking specifically on page three sixty-five, uh, restriction or or criteria, what are we calling these? We're calling them standards. Uh, some of the standards say accessory dwelling units shall be real property on and on a foundation. Uh, what is that counsel like that? That says ADU shall be compatible and designed and scaled with the principal structure. Uh, compatible, I think, is an objective standard that we can all understand, but I was wondering if that means uh ADUs cannot be a shipping container if they're on a foundation. That's the council's pleasure on shipping containers on a foundation. Um, if we could get some instruction on that for the third reading, that would be great, but primarily on eleven here. The way it's written now, and it has been changed since the first reading, it says an accessory dwelling unit may be eight hundred square feet or up to fifty percent of the size of the principal dwelling unit, whichever is greater. What we added is up to a maximum of twelve hundred square feet. So that's something new from the first reading. And if we could get some instruction that the council likes that, or if the council would like us to tweak that for the third and final reading next month. Um, and then you can see on twelve there, that's the definition of incidental, so we don't have to argue about what incidental means. I will say that there's different definitions of incidental, so this is what incidental means for ADUs. Incidental might mean something different or something else. I think those are the changes, and I think those are the points I wanted to bring to your attention tonight. So with that, stand for any questions. Thank you.
Council, any questions or comments on the changes?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Charlie, I have a question, and I just clarification. Uh, I really like, I think the twelve hundred unit maximum is good, and I think that goes to what Mr. May said in the last, it could be a in-law size, and so I think that's a good size. What I'm a little confused is the eight hundred square feet a minimum, because I also thought I read the minimum of three hundred square feet. I don't know if that was an example or whether can you explain what?
I can. Yep, I can, and if I get it wrong, then Ms. Thornborough will correct me, but I think that it used to say three hundred or four hundred, but based on the planning and zoning commission's recommendation, they thought eight hundred was better. So um, so I I think maybe you did read three hundred or four hundred at some point in time, but P and Z wanted to change that, and so, um, okay, but you're the decision maker. You get to decide.
Well, I I was, I just, I kind of had both numbers.
You're, well, they're both in here.
Right, right. Yeah, so I want a clarification.
Okay, so number five is uh, the unit shall have at least three hundred, and then we get down to number eleven, and it says uh, it can be eight hundred or fifty percent. And if the fifty percent, if you've got a twenty-four hundred foot home, you could have a twelve hundred foot accessory.
So I did see that.
You did.
So what concerned me a little bit is kind of a discussion that James and I had, and this pertains to the Saunder, so they've got seven units that are three hundred and fifty square feet. Could they potentially all of a sudden say, you know what, I don't got any artists that are moving into these things. I'm going to turn them all into ADUs because your your minimum's three hundred square feet, and I'm going to turn them into ADUs and then and because of their that size, they are below parking standards and they're all these things. So I think we need to have a higher minimum, I guess, is would be uh the discussion. If it's eight hundred feet, that's great. I think that's, I just not sure.
It's it's more than just the square footage. Jenna, why don't you explain what an ADU would have to have in addition to just square footage, like a kitchen and a bedroom and, you know, things that would make it
Right.
really expensive to do. Yeah.
That's a remodel.
Closet, yeah.
Um.
Read that.
Certainly, Mayor. Thank you. Um, I think you hit the highlights. I believe closet, I heard as well, is also included um, in that um, I don't know if there are other items off the top of my head that it would include besides the living space, the bedroom, the bathroom and closet, um, the habitable space. Um, sans any more questions on that, I might uh note two things that Mr. Waddams brought up. Uh, the current standard is six hundred square feet as a maximum. Um, so currently code is six hundred square feet.
Turn her mic up at all. There is it all of them, Lisa or Colin, whoever's running that?
Mayor, I can also do better with my my voice too.
Like I'm Jack say over here.
And and the last item that Mr. Waddams brought up, um, Garden City Code under non-residential structures does prohibit um, prefabricated um, shipping containers, metal buildings, et cetera, unless they lose the appearance of of that prefabricated. I'm using the wrong word, but uh, just to point that out, that does not uh necessarily extend to residential, so that was a an a good catch that I didn't anticipate hearing tonight. Um, another option, perhaps maybe in future code revisions that the councils look at is perhaps taking the prohibited uh building styles and relocating them in a separate section of code to address that issue.
We aren't going to address that right now.
So, uh, Mr. Mayor, if I could just add to that, yeah, and and the way you read this is uh, the words that are not underlined, that's the current version of the code, and the words that are underlined are what the proposals are. So the current version of the code says has to have a kitchen with appliances for cooking of food, sink and storage, uh, shall provide a bathroom with minimally with minimally a sink, toilet and either a tub or a shower. Then you have the minimum of the three hundred square feet of habitable space, uh, or at least one closet and have an approved address. That's all the way our code currently reads. Uh, of course, you could change that now through this three-reading process, but what we're recommending we add or modify is what's underlined or stickered through.
So the minimum would be eight hundred feet, Charlie? Is that the way everything?
Uh, the minimum would still be three hundred square feet of habitable space.
Again, I, that's what I'm just wondering about that space. So I would imagine in the example that I gave, it sits on a foundation because it's in that complex. I'm assuming each of those is going to have a bathroom because they're private workspaces. How hard would it be to retrofit that and to have seven ADUs because they're?
So we're talking about having ADUs or ADUs. Uh, would ADUs be allowed within a multifamily structure by converting a uh, storage space or a workspace within the same structure and calling that an ADU that's pertinent to I think that I don't know. When I think of your example, I think that the workspaces are on the second floor and the living units are on an upper floor. They're not arguably, uh, are these rentals? Or if it have to be a condominium component first.
I mean, they're going to ready, if they don't have a resident use of, they're going to run them out to the public.
I know, but but the point is, uh, I don't know. This is a question we may have to ponder. We're talking about single-family residential dwellings, aren't we? Isn't that our intent? An ADU would be uh, uh, on a single-family dwelling unit, so that if uh, it's not meant to be to be used in the way that you suggested, so uh, my suggestion might be if we add the 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 term that the ADU provision applies to single-family detached.
I think that would be appropriate.
Yeah.
Because I think if if people can kind of gain that.
Does that work?
Um, Mayor, uh, thank you. Uh, yes, the single-family uh unit, certainly that does work.
Family detached.
Um, Mayor, uh. If it's an attached, like a duplex, that would preclude a duplex, for example.
Say that again, please.
Um, a single-family attached, like a town townhome, a duplex, uh, that would preclude those, and maybe that is the the intent.
Now, those are already multi family dwellings on a single lot, in my view, but that's up to the council.
Well, I just, I I just had a comment, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, no.
That's my job.
Uh, thank you, uh. Counselperson, jury. I was just, I was just thinking of, uh, you know, somebody has said, I've always assumed it didn't apply to uh multifamily dwellings and, uh, you know, what, what efficiency department apartments or studio apartments and so forth. It's, I mean, that's what you'd have if you took one of those small, small units, but but you put up a dwelling uh that's separated from the house, you build a pergola or a uh you know, what we used to call, um, well, I won't take myself back that long, but but uh some kind of, okay.
Yeah. Okay, a connection, you know, a roofed uh, uh, portico that connects the two buildings. Well, uh, who who would argue that that's inappropriate? I mean.
I think the single lot, I think, is kind of what you were talking about.
Exactly.
It has to be on its own lot, so you can't have, you know, it just seems like if you, oh, that'll never happen until it happens, right? And so that's, I guess, that's what I'm afraid of and 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 it just kind of brought up that conversation because Matthew said, well, that's not our intent. Well, yeah, that that doesn't mean that it won't happen if I can't rent those out.
You can, you can always see how the single-family detached works.
Yeah.
Uh, and if there was some demand to add units to a duplex lot, I I really see some problems with that, and I'm trying to think most duplex lots are at minimum setbacks as it right now, unless there's some down behind the gates there off of uh uh, back in where you guys live. You know, I can't think the name of that. Rod Blackstead built them, but they may be on bigger lots, but I don't think they are. So I I think it's a moot point on on anything but a single-family detached that has a big enough lot that you could add something and still meet the setbacks for the backyard and side setbacks. I think we're we've got a very small.
Yeah, yeah. Something I would like to see, um, I'd like to see the minimum move up to eight hundred square feet. About an eight by ten uh structure. It has a bathroom, a shower, or a toilet, a shower, a sink, a cupboard, a kitchen, a kitchen space. You're about done. That's I I just don't, I don't know. I don't see doing that in six hundred square feet or three hundred square feet. I guess it could be done. Um, but
Nine hundred square feet is not much.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, furthermore, for the the materials, I'd like, I like language, and I'm going to steal something from an HOA CCNR that I'm familiar with that says, um, you know, buildings will have the same general building material. So if the house has a asphalt shingle and uh, hardy board siding, then the ADU would have that uh, as opposed to like a tin uh shed or corrugated. Yeah, now if the structure is shipping containers that have lost their characteristics by adding other building materials, then I'd be fine with an ADU looking like that, if if it matches. Like, I I want it to match.
So, uh, Mayor, Council President, I I think you're talking specifically about tan, and maybe you want to change some of the wording on tan here.
Correct.
Right now, it's compatible with the design and scale.
Yeah, that's also, yeah.
Yeah, we can, whatever wording the council would like for third reading.
Yeah, you could use a word like similar, but then that's, that's not precise, but it's a little better than compatible.
Yeah, I think, uh, President of the council nailed it on the head. I think we, I would prefer to see some specific language.
Yeah.
Okay, so how about, uh, Council President, I get with you later, because it's a legislative matter. I'll get, I'll get with you later. It's covered under, and we'll come up with maybe some alternative wording.
I'm comfortable with that. Thank you.
And then, Council President, you also recommended that we move that three hundred to eight hundred. Is that what I heard as well?
That's my preference.
Okay, just uh, the standard double garage is about five hundred square feet. Just to give you the context. So you're thinking of eighty, eight by tens, eighty.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I am, I did my math wrong.
Yeah, yeah. So a standard double garage is 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 about, you know, twenty-two by twenty-four.
You go to law school because you're talking bad.
I I knew what he was thinking and.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So whatever the pleasure the council will get.
Yeah, I just.
Where did the original three hundred come from? Do we know?
Um, Mayor, members of the council, um, I do not, I believe without checking, I believe it may be building code um, as the minimum standards, but I'd need to verify that I'm correct in that hunch.
And I'm okay, I just don't want it to be inside kind of example that I gave, so maybe the.
Well, I'm just thinking that, I'm just trying to think of, uh, we've got some one-acre lots in Apache. We've got some large lots west of town uh, off of uh, Shalan. We may, we have some larger lots uh in Lakeland, but I would suspect that they are CCNR restricted.
Yeah.
Uh, I just don't know where you're gonna with these. Uh, uh, maybe there's some hundred by three hundreds in east of the fairgrounds. Uh, but if you get too big of a minimum, I mean, you're just restricting that down, but.
Mr. Mayor, I recall uh, a year or two ago, um, well, no, it was Pam Beaumont was still on council and Jeff Suda, so uh, we have approved an ADU in um Riverside. And uh, it was snug, but it was a good size ADU.
Yeah. And there's some there's a few larger lots. Yeah.
Yeah, it looked like a little house.
So, um, we we can do whatever you want with it. I just thought I'd give you some perspective of of what a five hundred what five hundred feet is. It's about size of a double garage, and you can easily have living quarters in a space that size if it's accessory.
Like, so I'm okay with three as long as where to.
Well, I'm Sir Mayor and Council, if we if we change it to say this only applies to single-family detached, or detached, just to take care of.
Yeah.
And and Mayor, members of the council, I may may um request another clarification if the intent is this is only a separate structure. If the intent is this is only a separate structure, it's not.
Hard time understanding.
My apologies, um, Mayor, members of the council, just another clarification within the code that this conversation is bringing up for me. Um, is that if the council is intending that the accessory dwelling is just a detached. Structure, if that needs to be clarified as well, um, to Mr. Or to Councilmember Jacobs' point.
I I think it has to, or it's just a. It's just a remodel.
But what about a casino or a portico? That's, I mean, you would say it's attached by the roof, right?
Really getting in the weeds.
But I would say that's obvious.
Yeah, has more.
Yeah, yeah.
So. Sorry for the.
No, go ahead.
But the definition of terms accessory structure, a detached structure that is incidental and subordinate. To the principal structure.
There.
So I think right there.
What was that? I I read this so many times. Yeah, there it is, okay.
So we'll just change that, Mayor and Council, it sounds like we should say it's a detached, single family structure, just put single family.
Yeah.
Mr. Thorber, are you?
Um, Mayor, uh, Councilmember Heller, I'm trying to, uh, figure out what, uh. Mr. Wadams is writing down where he's writing it down, so.
Yeah.
You're gonna read body language, Russ.
However, Mr. Mayor, harkening back to President of the Council's question. I I believe he is directed, his question to me was, I'm, I'm fine, it's a three hundred square feet. I don't see a reason to change that.
Sorry, I I probably chimed in, yeah.
Really narrow and long.
Yeah, I mean, that's one way, yeah.
With all those things being said, uh, Mayor and Council. Um, if we can get through a second reading, we'll get it all fine tuned for the third.
There you go.
Okay, yeah, council's ready, uh, entertain a motion. You read ordinance ten thirty-three dash twenty-two for the second reading.
I so moved.
A second, got a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I modify my motion, read, read by title only.
Thank you.
And the second.
Second, okay, thank you, any discussion on the modified motion? Uh, Harry Non, we're called all.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes.
Second reading ordinance ten thirty-three dash twenty-two. An ordinance of the city of Garden City, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, amending Garden City Code Title Eight Development Code, Chapter Two. Based zoning district regulations, Article C, land use provisions, Section fourteen, dwelling unit accessory. And Chapter seven references Article A definitions, Section two definitions of terms. By amending the language to include updated standards for accessory dwelling units, providing severability regarding conflicting city code provisions. Approving a summary of the ordinance and providing an effective date.
Great, thank you, next item is second reading of ordinance ten thirty-dash twenty-two. Two, ten thirty dash twenty-two, yes, Mr. Waddams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I my, I did not actually update my memo on this at all because it sounded like everybody was on the same page during the first reading. Um, I will just remind the council that for each of these three, there will also have to be a decision document during the third reading, that's already been continued to a date certain. That's one that's give that as a reminder, I can also, uh, for Councilmember Heller's benefit. But one of the typos he pointed out on page three seventy-five is still there, I will make sure that is fixed part of the third reading. And so we'll take, so I I did just spot that issue, Councilmember Heller, and I apologize, it will be fixed. Um, other than that, if the council is comfortable delegating its authority to, uh, to either Mr. Schmidt and Miss Thornborough. Or Mr. Canning, I think Mr. Canning is one of the three, that's what this does, is it's gonna delegate the authority to staff. Uh, we will come back, the council wants the second reading tonight as written, we'll come back. For the third reading with a resolution outlining what the policy will be. Um, and then the other question I guess I have is whether there should be any kind of a cap on their discretion, or are they gonna have unfettered discretion on? On their, what the surety should look like, the way this is written is there's a, there's a base at a hundred and twenty-five percent. But if Mr. Schmidt, Miss Thornborough, or Mr. Canning thought it needs to be higher than they, but you would be delegating the authority for them to ask for a higher surety. So that's what this is.
Hey, any questions? Right, entertain an action.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we. Move forward with the second reading of ordinance ten dash thirty-two dash twenty-two in title only.
Ten, ten thirty.
Oh, ten thirty dash twenty-two in title only.
Second, okay, we've got a motion and a second, and the discussion.
Councilmember Heller.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Second reading ordinance ten thirty dash twenty-two, an ordinance of the city of Garden City, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, amending a repealing Garden City Code. Title eight, development code, Chapter five, land division requirements, Article B subdivision process. Section seven, guarantee of completion of improvements, repealing ordinance number eight nine eight dash oh eight in its entirety. Repealing all ordinances or parts thereof to the extent they conflict with this ordinance. Providing all other ordinances included in the official code are still in effect, notwithstanding some provisions thereof being eliminated. Amending Title Eight Development Code, Chapter Six Administration, Article A, General Provisions, adding Section fifteen, Financial Surety. The language to include updated provisions for sureties, providing severability, repealing conflicting city code provisions, approving a summary of the ordinance and providing an effective date.
Thank you, uh, next item on the agenda is item G four, this is the second reading for ordinance ten thirty-two dash twenty-two. Uh, Mr. Waddams.
Mayor and Council, I I have a memo on page three seventy-nine and I just added a part. Uh, dealing with if the council would like this to be retroactive. And so if we can get some instruction tonight from the council on whether this should be retroactive, and when I say that, I go through the analysis, but specifically, the question is. If somebody has a permit that has been approved under the old version of the code. And then this code amendment comes along and they ask for an extension of that approval. Does the council want that to be under the old, that extension to be under the old version of the code, so that would go to the council? Or and and for a different period of time, length of time, or would the council like that to be a staff decision under the new version of code? If we could just get, uh, instruction on that one way or another and we'll get it, uh, we'll make, whatever the council's intent, we'll get that ready to go for the third reading.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd just weigh in on that, I think that, I think that that's, um, not a great idea. I think if we're gonna hold other codes to the, to the date that. Of the application of the date that it of its genesis, we really should be consistent with this, or we're gonna have some parody problems.
Mr. Mayor, I agree.
Do you elaborate on that?
Well, uh, let's take today's application for the Saunder. There was, um, they're compliant with the, the prior code for parking. And Mr. Waddams in our, his legal memo said, yes, but, you know, even though the code's been changed, they applied under the old code. So they were held to the standard of the old code.
Right.
Um, if we do something different with this, then we're. We're creating a situation where we're treating the same people in same situations differently, which could be a parody problem.
So I. To be, so, uh, so to understand, so if they don't get this built in two years. Are you saying they need to then conform to the new code, or we are granting them?
That their extension request would fall under the old methodology or getting extension requests. Nothing to do with the timeline of when it's built, it's the that the process for applying for an extension would have to be under the old manner. Of doing, so it'll, it'll complicate our process until we run out of applicants. That started in that period of time before we change the code.
Mayor and Council, just that point, I I've talked to Ms. Thornborough about that and, you know, the staff can do that, but then staff's gonna have to figure out what version of the code. The original application came in under, I don't know, I I know Ms. Thornborough has some thoughts on that.
Yeah, and I I have a question, uh, that she can answer too, because it's my understanding that, um. Well, let me ask it this way. If it's. If you allow the procedure to be retroactive, which means the extended timeline and everything. Would that be? Uh, would the consideration be that it has to be extended under the current code? As opposed to the code under which it was originally. Cause that's, that's to get to what Councilmember Page is, because there's, there's a couple of ways of looking at that, you're either extending the old code. Criteria. On the basis of a. Of a procedural change in the code. Dealing just with extensions, it isn't dealing with. Uh, the substantive criteria, uh, that that allowed for the approval, so. Um, if. If an extension that. Request comes in and the approval was under the old code. The extension request is essentially. An affirmation of the original approval. And that affirmation of an original approval would be, we'd look at it like a new approval and should be subject to the current code. That's, that's the way I'd look at it, it's.
Yeah, I I think I would agree.
But Jenna, I want you to weigh in on that because, uh, it's like an. It's like, uh, uh. You know, I don't know, like a remodel on a building, and if you wanna come in and and. Remodel it, you don't apply the code that was in place when you built it, you have to bring it up to the current standard. So, that's, that's just boy, my mind's processing it, but maybe. Maybe you have another thought, otherwise it's gonna get pretty confusing.
Um, Mayor, uh, Council, Council President Page, uh, to, and Mayor. Uh, the way that my mind has processed it, I believe is similar. To both of of your points.
You need to run for office.
Hey, you could explain it.
Where the application, um, and once it's approved, the timeline for which it's approved under. Is the code which under it's approved, so whether it's a year or the new subdivisions. Um, would be two years, should this be approved, whereas the extension is a new and separate act. Um, to be viewed under the provisions of the the extension that wasn't already approved under the original application. And I think that's similar to perhaps how, um, both of you are looking at it, but perhaps not.
Well, you're segregating the, 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 what we're considering here, the process of the length of time of an extension and those things. You're segregating that from. The, uh, standards of the project. That was approved, so. The standards. You used a great term there, uh, it's a new and separate act, so the standard, if you ask for an extension. And the standards have changed and you didn't complete it under the original approval timeline. Then you'd have to conform to the new standards. Is that what you're saying?
Correct, that application would then be nullified and voided, yes.
But this would allow the. The timeline. The timelines to remain. Uh, with the criteria that was in place, or the procedure that was in place at the time of the original approval.
Mayor, that's my understanding how it's drafted, perhaps that is not.
You like, Mayor and Council, that that would be the default, uh, if you apply for an extension, you're gonna be stuck with the the new version of the code that. When you ask for the extension, unless the council wants to make it retroactive. I mean, the default would be be the new code. But wha- whatever the council, whatever council wants, we'll just put it anywhere in it, so it's clear for your, um, public. I think we just should specify it.
I think what I'm thinking is you should be able to get the extension. I'm seeing the extension procedure, meaning six months to a year or a year to two years, whatever that is, is a completely separate issue. From the, uh. Criteria. That was essential to the approval of the application, so. Uh, we looked at one tonight, so you've got an approval. Uh, with certain criteria under an old code. If you have a, if you have an extension request. On a, uh, that constitutes a new and separate approval. Then it'd have to be conformance with the code that's in place at the time of the extension request.
Ms. Jor.
That's, that's the option. Now. Boy, I'm really complicating this because, um. Unless.
I don't think it's new.
I'm thinking of subdivisions, Jenna, when you have a preliminary plat approved, where you lock in the conditions of approval over a period of time. They might. Supersede what I just been talking about, so.
No, no, that is not how I interpret this.
I think, uh, Mayor and Council, I I it is, I think it's whatever the council wants it to be, we'll just write it in, but that's, that's kind of what I'm asking, do you want? When Saunder comes around or Project X comes around, it's already been approved. And they come back with an extension, which you want the old version to, uh, code, or you want the new version?
I think if the extension doesn't run with the date of approval. And what the extension was, a a snapshot of the day that it was approved, what whatever extension criteria was on that day. I think we get into trouble, because then they say, well, hey, the parking's changed since then, it's now three years later. The, you've changed your parking code, uh, and it favors us somehow to build it under the new way. Boy, that's, that's tough to explain why we're holding them to two different timelines.
Well, this, doesn't code say you have to have something from the time it's approval, you have X number of years to break down?
And that's what we're talking about.
And if you don't, then why was, then at that point, you have to apply again, right, your, your application is automatically denied. Is my understanding, and then you reapply, you'd have to apply to the new code. So basically, when you run out of extent, so you're saying you grant it under the old code. Until you run out of extensions, and then it's like, okay, in this case, you have to help it, you run out of extensions, it's automatically denied, you can reapply.
I mean, if it's a new application.
So for clarification. Sorry, I didn't.
No, 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 go ahead.
So. So, I'm an applicant, I file my paperwork. And it, I understand the code under which I filed that application. And in that code, it says you have X amount of time to execute, if you don't, you have to file for an extension. Do we provide guidance on what that filing for extension looks like?
Mayor, Councilmember Jorgensen. In the decision documents, there's criteria that says what code says. Your, your application will be, um, as valid for one year, right now, basically. There, there are some ins and outs of that, um. And then on our website, we talk about how you ask for an extension. Um, the extension criteria is not in that decision document itself, if that is what you're asking.
Let me rephrase, the, the criteria. Is irrelevant, the process, is there a statement of the process, so for instance, we say. If you file for reconsideration, it goes in front of the decision-making bodies, city council has the right to review, approve, or deny. Or take no action. Is that process for extension outlined? Such that under the old code. It says if you need to extend, you're gonna file an extension that will be reviewed and approved by city council. And if that's in that, we have to remain, we can't make it retroactive, right? Because then I'm an applicant that filed under a code. I have every right to expect that I get to follow that code through completion, that's the way I'm thinking, and if we break. From that original expectation of how they filed their application, then to President of the Council's. Filed their application, then to president of the council's point, we've got a parity issue. We've got them applying under ex- expectation A, but then shifting mid, mid stride.
To process B.
Now we're going to process B.
Mayor and councilmember Jorgensen to that point, but, but we're making it, uh, if we were making it harder to get an extension, I would see that, but we're making it easier to get an extension. So. I would think if I was a developer, I'd want the new version of code because it's easier. I don't have to come see the council. I just have to get Jenna to sign off on it. So if we were making it harder to get an extension, I would see a parity problem, but, but we're making it easier. If that makes sense.
Yeah.
We're not taking people's vested rights away. We're, we're adding rights to what they already have.
Yeah, I think that cuts to the, cuts to the question, doesn't it?
Right.
Oh, unless you're a member of a community that doesn't want, didn't want the project built.
There's the other side of it.
And then you're like, hey, you didn't meet your deadline. Garden City hold them to their, what we expect.
There's both sides. There's two sides to everything.
At some point you run out of extensions, right? And I.
I think so.
Well, but you're not required to grant an extension. It isn't a shall. There's a review process and an extension.
So, right, mayor and council, I believe Jen, I mean Jen is going to look at an extension request and the first one is going to be, is it going to be automatic? Or are you going to? Need to know what the just causes is. Are you just going to stamp it approved?
Isn't there a sta- finding a standard for ju- for, uh, due cause?
Yes, but I think that realistically, I, I got the impression it's just going to be a rubber stamp.
Is there a certain number of extensions you can have before you run out of extensions?
Two, uh, the, the, uh, council member, uh, Jacobs, uh, it's the way it's written right now. The proposed change would be. Staff gets to look at the first two requests and then the third request, then it does go up to the elected, to the council. So, but for the first two. Get, I thought you just get that stamped out.
You mean, should code be a little bit more? Specific to say you get two extensions or whatever, three, whatever the number is. And then at, at that point. There's just no more and your project is denied and you have to reapply and then you apply under the new code. So, you know, rep, because I think it seems like, well, I'm going to apply for extension, but, uh, you know, you can extension to that. For years, they randomly, it's like at some point, I think the code ought to say. You get two or three or however many extensions. Let's say it's. Two one-year extensions, right? So I didn't get it done in year one. I need an extension for another year. I didn't get it done in year two. Sorry. You don't get any more extensions. You have to reapply. At that point you got to follow, you got, you got to follow.
So Jen is going to show us here, but it's.
So it's cut and dry that you kind of put the developers on notice that they have two years basically to get it done or.
And we started, and we started this because you can't realistically get anything done in 12 months anymore.
But two years, that would, you know, gives you time.
Yeah.
Whatever that number is, whatever we. Maybe it's two and a half or whatever, but at some point it's like.
And I think we call it. I think you have to, if you pull a building permit during the time. You know.
And then you have so much time to act on that, right?
Yeah, uh. And I think once you start construction, you've satisfied the start date.
Right.
So.
Yeah, kind of quite. It seems like that would even come before.
And. Mayor, members of council, uh, there, there are a couple of things. I'm wondering if we have the, a previous version of the, the, uh, code in here. And. And so, um, the, the first is that, um. The city council would have, would review the extensions. Um, for the Title Eight entitlement, uh. Um, applications under the same. Uh, criteria that's currently, um, so are currently in code. So the good cause, et cetera, et cetera. Under Title Seven, the building permit, uh, there should be the ability, uh, for staff to, um. Allow for an extension prior to, uh, it coming to the city council. Um, and I'm trying to find the exact word anymore that is in the proposal. Um, and, uh, one thing that I would like to note, uh, initially staff had, uh, requested. Um, an increase on the timeframe for the, the permits under Title Seven. However, there is a conflict with, uh, FEMA regulations. Under the, which FEMA requires, uh, that co-. Permits are invalid, at least the, the FEMA section. So if you have flood venting, et cetera, et cetera, within a hundred and eighty days. Um, and that's where I'm wondering if this may have, um, been a previous version of the, the code. Um, however, after staff is allowed to, um. Authorize an extension of a time, then it would come up to city council. And then, uh, one other item that staff would like to bring up is this currently notes that. Uh, signed permits are treated differently. An allowance for two years extension and staff has questioned why a signed permit should be treated differently than all the other Title Eight. Uh, applications and ha- would suggest that perhaps council, uh, would like to consider. Um, having all Title Eight, uh, extensions be the same.
What would you like?
Uh, uh.
What's easy, what's easy to administer and what makes sense operationally?
Uh, operationally, um, it would be nice to have all of the extensions in one place and code. So building extensions in one. And then subdivisions would need a longer timeframe than other Title Eight entitlements, but just those three locations. And then, um. Staff completely understands the, the issue of parity, but from an administrative point. Um, one timeframe would be preferable. Um, I can note that there are. Individuals waiting to see what happens with this code for their next extension request, building extension request. Um, and so if, if those are tied to previous extent or, uh, applications and they're not able to. Um, go through the process easier, uh, staff can certainly figure out, look at the timeframe and figure it out. Um, but it is. Slightly easier to be able to go as of this date. This is the process that we apply.
Okay. And as this ordinance is written, does that accomplish what you think would be operationally advantageous or not?
Um. Mayor, uh, provided that, uh. That there's the, well. I guess that, um, I don't know how to answer that. Um.
Well, you live in a world that we don't live in down here in this, and I witness it, but I'm not in there. And I think anything we can do. To. Make up the operational function there, uh, smoother, less complicated, uh. Less staff intensive. I'd like the council to at least know about that. And so that, that could be part of their consideration.
Um, Mayor, uh, certainly anything that we could do to reduce the number of, uh, to use the term rubber stamp applications that are having to be processed. At a, a council level, um. Uh, where. That creating the decision documents and the staff reports and pulling together, um, the, the decision document afterwards. It's not a great amount of time, but as you start adding those together, it turns into a, a time efficiency. Issue, and it also is an efficiency issue for the applicants, um, where it would be nice for them. In certain situations, you know, if it's their one time to come in and be able to get that extension and know that it could be done same day over the counter.
Hey, do you think this ordinance we're reading for the second time accomplishes that or not?
Um, Mayor, uh, no, I, I would suggest, uh, deleting the, the timeframes within the sign code. Uh, would be helpful because then all of Title Eight would be dealt with either via subdivisions or other. Or other category. Um. And then as drafted right now, uh, the one hundred and eighty days, uh, staff suggests, uh, may create a conflict if. We have an issued permit that's not expired, but a part of that permit has expired and we have to reup it.
So what do we do with the one eighty?
Unfortunately, we leave it at one eighty. So, uh, with that, there would need to be, um, one eighty, a hundred and eighty days is not enough time for most applicants. Um, and so there would need to be that administrative, uh, process.
Just to extend the one eighty, make it easier.
So, Ken, just to clarify, so at what point would that, that fall under the new code? I guess I'm still a confused on that. Like, when does it go from old code to new code?
Um. Uh, Mayor, uh, Councilmember Jacobs, um, staff's deference, provided that there is not a parody. Uh, issue would be that the. Extension process would be effective on all applications once the ordinance is passed.
So once, so after a year and they want a year extension, they'd have to, they'd say, okay, we'll extend it. We got to fall under new code.
Um.
Am I hearing that right?
Mayor, uh, Councilmember Jacobs, uh, depending on when they were approved. So if a subdivision was approved today. They would be adherent to that one-year timeframe. And so in one year, then they would have to come ask for an extension. Whereas if that same, uh, different subdivisions approved in three months, then they would have two years before they would have to come in for the.
But if they come in from an extension a year from the day. Do they then have to follow under the new code we're proposing or, or the old? I guess I'm confused about when. But when is the new code kick in at one point? Right. You got your, your extension. But if you want that second year, you're going to have to fall into new code. Is that what you're saying?
Um. Mayor, Councilmember Jacobs, only for the extension. All other, uh, parts of the application that were approved would be approved under the code that they were approved under. So the parking codes, uh, um, all of those sections that were reviewed would still apply to that application. There is a finding. Um, that, um. Is if, uh, regulations have changed. And so that finding would be there. Yes, regulations have changed, parking ordinance has changed, et cetera, et cetera. And that could be caused. Then to deny the extension request.
So, so Mayor and Council, what I'm hearing is, uh, the council perhaps wants the extensions to be retroactive, but not the general permit.
Yes. No, that's what I'm like. I think, I think part of the confusion is you're separating the extension process. From the merits of the project.
Right.
The merits of the project are evaluated under the appropriate. Approval process and have conditions and so forth. Uh. The retroactive part, that would remain, uh. The retroactive part would be the latitude. That we would have administratively to extend. The timelines and then. If. If there's been a regulatory change on the merits of the project. And the, and their approval time has run and they have to get an extension. Then.
Then they would utilize the extension process that's identified in code at the date they've requested the extension.
Yes. Okay.
And let, excuse me, and, and what the criteria, um, describing the project remain, uh, under, under the old.
Mayor, Councilmember Heller, that's correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Giving some of the benefit of, of the more generous extensions, you know.
Yeah. Now subdivision's a great example because some subdivisions are phased.
Right.
You know, I'm, I'm in the eighth year one now, big subdivision I've done. So I mean. You can't keep moving the goalpost. Okay, d- does the staff understand this sufficiently to take a crack at getting this right or not right, but modified for the third reading?
I think, uh, Mayor and Council, I think that Jenna and I get it and we work together. I'm not hearing anybody on the council disagree with what's being said. Except for the parity concern.
And, and, um, I think in, uh. The slim instance that we encounter somebody sophisticated enough to raise a parity issue. Um, it doesn't warrant the additional staff loading, so I'm willing to roll those dice.
You know. Okay, uh, the matter before us is the second reading of ordinance ten thirty-two dash twenty-two. Thanks, Jen.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we. Proceed with the second reading of ordinance ten thirty-two dash twenty-two by title only.
Second. Got a motion and a second and a discussion on the motion. Hearing on the clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Second reading ordinance ten thirty-two dash twenty-two and ordinance of the city of Garden City and municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, amending Garden City Code Title Seven. Building code to amend the following provisions, Title Seven Building Regulations, Chapter One. Purpose and Administration, Section Five Permit Time Limitation and Expiration. Section Seven Permit Reactivation, Title Eight Development Code, Chapter Two Base Zoning District. Regulations, Article C Land Use Provisions, Section Thirty-three Recreational Vehicle Park. Chapter Four Design and Development Regulations, Article F Sign Provision, Section Four Permit Required, Chapter Five Land Division Regulations. Article B Subdivision Process, Section Six Term of Permits. Chapter Six Administration, Article A General Provisions, Section Eight Expiration of Approvals. Article B Specific Provisions, Section Two Conditional Use by amending the language to modify provisions for permit extensions providing severability. Repealing conflicting city code provisions, approving a summary of the ordinance and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Item G five, uh, this item would authorize, uh, me to enter into the Idaho opioid settlement. Interestate allocation agreement. Uh, we've gone one round with this and now there's a new round of money available. Uh, the condition on. Uh, receiving funds for this is that you have, uh, an opioid-related addiction. Um, mitigation program. Which of course we do not have. So what practice has been in the past and I recommend for the future is that we accept the settlement money. And we have the ability to pass that money through to the Allenbaugh House, which, uh, has that type of a program. Uh, that is staffed by Terry O'Reilly. Uh, so they have the mental health and the, uh, substance abuse and all, all those things. So. Uh, I hate to not, not take the money and put it to use in our community and we can do that, uh. By passing this money through to Allenbaugh House. So that's my request.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to authorize Mayor Evans' tenure into the Idaho opiate opioid settlement. Interest. Date allocation agreement for a second round of funding.
Second.
Got a motion and a second and a discussion on the motion. And on the clerk call roll.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Hey, um. Item June sixth.
That's a long way around the barn, as they say.
Hey, uh, this is going to be, uh, this is, item was, uh, moved from the work session, um. To the council meeting and. The purpose of, uh, Ms. Thornborough's presentation is to give the. Council an opportunity to ask any clarifying questions, uh. If this is not an opportunity, uh, to deliberate, deliberate on this issue. Or express, uh, specific opinions on what you like and what you don't like. This is to, to clarify any misunderstandings or any components. Uh, of what is before us. Uh, for informational purposes. So. It's your pleasure, Ms. Thornborough.
I thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Um. I know we're towards the end of the evening, so I'll try to be brief but thorough. Um. Some of this is overview of, uh, items the council's already talked about, uh, knowing that parking has changed. Since ordinance was last addressed, the last parking ordinance has been addressed. Um, and the parking within Garden City receives, uh, a wider array of criticism. a wider array of criticism, ranging from too little parking required of redevelopment to too much parking required of redevelopment. Um, uh, some of the other comments that we've heard is concerned about, uh, lack of rate or government regulating parking at all, lack of enforcement and unclear requirements. Um, there are a number of strategies available for the city to address parking and this is a regulatory strategy, and so previously, uh, we've discussed that a parking ordinance is citywide, uh, it needs to facilitate growth and in Garden City, there's urbanizing growth as well as preserve, um, existing neighborhoods. It's been quite a process. It started with reviewing parking strategies. Um, and there was a parking perception, uh, survey and then three regulatory directions were presented, um, including repeal a consistent parking approach where all non-residential parking would, uh, have a consistent, uh, requirement applied and then a use-by-use approach. There was an open house and public comments, uh, related to those approaches. And then there've been multiple reviews, uh, coupled with design review consultants, um, a couple of work sessions with the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, there has been a hearing with the Planning and Zoning Commission and at the next meeting, there will be a hearing, uh, with the city council. And over the course of this process, there's been significant public comment. Um, the public perception survey, there were a hundred and eighty-four participants. Um, then the virtual open house, um, received forty-nine responses, including those that did the virtual and in-house, uh, combining the, their responses as well at, as an additional twenty-one, uh, written comments. Um, the comments at the ser- perception, uh, survey level were quite split. Um, as, uh, it, as the process went on, um, there was more and more support for those who responded to the open house to a repeal option, um, noting that a standard approach is difficult to apply, uh, to all uses, um. There was a request that, uh, there be an increased number of parking reductions and a reduced stringency of the criteria for the equivalent parking reduction. Um, and the idea of a parking benefit district and the desirability of that. Uh, there was no support for a use-by-use, uh, approach with every single use, uh, in Garden City Title Eight, uh, having a separate, uh, uh, criteria. Um, in, in working with the Planning and Zoning Commission, with the consultants, uh, in taking into consideration the comments that the city has received, um, all sections of Garden City eight four D parking and off-street loading provisions were clear, have been clarified. Dimensional standards have been added. Um, the maximum distance has been consistently noted at a quarter mile for what, what it is walkable per code. Um, a prohibition of light trespass has been added, uh, so that's where not designing the parking so that lights go directly into somebody else's bedroom. Um, a pedestrian walkway requirement from the parking area to the building entrance has been added. Uh, parking structure design criteria has been added, that's new, that's a um, additional bike standards have been added. Um, the garage in the draft proposal, I should clarify, they certainly haven't been added yet until, uh, this body, um, um, acts on it. Um, the garage requirement's been suggested to be amended to be covered parking rather than a strict, uh, garage parking. Um, accessory dwelling units, uh, have been noted specifically not to require additional, uh, parking requirement. The number of residential parking, um, was recommended to be reduced from two bedroom units to, to require one space rather than two spaces. Um, the number of, uh, parking for non-residential uses has now been broken out into categories of high, medium, low and negligible parking needs. And there's criteria that's been provided for each of those, uh, four categories. Um, bicycle parking requirements have been increased. Um, and the rationale for that is if there is a request to start reducing motor vehicle, uh, requirements, then, uh, bicycle parking takes relatively little real estate and offers some level of an alternative. Electric charging stall requirements have been adding, added, uh, calculation criteria has been added. Standards for alternatives to onsite parking has been amended to become equivalent parking adjustments and criteria has been added. An allowance of fifty percent of the required parking stalls for existing structures have been added, that was something, uh, that was out there, how do existing structures re, how do are they reutilized, um, as they change uses? Um, loading facilities are no longer mandatory, however, there are provisions for when they are constructed that remain. Um, there's been an addition of, uh, parking benefit district enabling criteria and I'll go over what that is a little bit later. Um, there's been a, a suggestion that, uh, allowance for a parking facility use, uh, be a conditional use in the R three zoning district where right now it's prohibited. Um, administration of a parking benefit district has been added to Title Five. Um, and criteria has been relocated or added to eight one C three property maintenance and conflicting sections are repealed. And the proposal that's in the packet is as recommended, um, with, uh, some potential, uh, changes for your consideration. And so the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of, uh, of the draft, um, as in your packet. Um, however, based on discussion and public testimony, they requested that staff summarize that and provide it to the city council for further review, but they made no specific, um, conditions or changes to the, the ordinance that, uh, had been drafted. Um, the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, recommended approval on a three-two vote. Uh, the N A votes, uh, indicated that they were in favor of the changes with the exception of requiring a certain number of spaces. Um, and the reasons that they cited for that was housing affordability, efficient and flexible land use. Um, noting that there is a, a movement in the direction to repeal increase of tax revenue without impacting ratepayers and con- comprehensive plan support. Um, the design review also, um, the, the, the consultants made suggestions and there was one of the two consultants that noted that a preference would be for a repeal. Um, with that being said, um, the, the criteria that was drafted, I, I do want to note, um, and that in discussions, um, with both the consultants and the P and Z, um, there is really a discussion that the code is to intended the way that they were reviewing it to set minimum standards. And so this would be the minimum and certainly an allowance for additional parking to be provided. Um, with the electric vehicle spaces, uh, this is something that, uh, the commission, um, did comment on, um, as drafted in their recommendation. Um, one to twenty-five spaces would require one parking space that's ready for electric, um, charging. And so th- this really follows the city of Boise's, um, electric vehicle charging requirements in their proposed ordinance. Um, but they had noted that, um, re- requiring the expense of electric vehicle parking, um, is quite expensive. And so there's been an option suggested in highlight to allow for, um, uh, a full charging station or chargers to be required and instead of um, one to twenty-five, uh, spaces, um, they had noted five. Um, and staff looking at that, if you only have five spaces taking a dedicated space for electric vehicle at this point in time may not make sense. And so staff had just canceled in ten to twenty-five units to have one ready space or, um, one actual space. And the other thing that came out of their discussion is that, um, if a business is changing out, uh, perhaps that's not an appropriate time to require that electric, uh, charging space. And so it would be required of new development or substantial improvements. And so they would not be required of, uh, uses of redevelopments that don't meet that threshold. Um, there was public testimony at the, um, at the hearing, um, noting that there had been a suggestion to add into property maintenance that, um, inoperable vehicles include vehicles that do not have current registration. And so those vehicles, um, current code, uh, requires that vehicles that are inoperable, uh, must be enclosed and within a structure or screened from view. Uh, this would extend, uh, some of the language that the staff is hearing from FEMA is, um, FEMA for FEMA regulations of RVs and whatnot would like to see that there are, um, vehicles with current registration. Uh, the, the testimony noted that they're not in favor of this because it could require the enforcement go on private property to check. Uh, the, the same individual did note, um, that Idaho's state law forty-nine one oh two, which is definitions, uh, state that vehicles shall not be deemed abandoned if they cannot be moved and the owner has notified the police department. Um, when staff looked through this proposal as well as, um, um, abandoned vehicle language within Garden City Code, staff did not see that there was a conflict and so has not, uh, there's been no proposed, uh, potential changes. Um, the next, uh, the highlighted again is based on public testimony and not strictly included, um, as, uh, the recommendation, but it is, uh, part of the Planning and Zoning Commission's desire that staff do, does synthesize some of these changes. Um, currently, the current recommendation is on spot, onsite spaces shall be within, uh, fifty feet to the building entrances. There was testimony noting that bicycle parking, uh, should be within five hundred feet of, uh, the, the, the building's entrance. And looking at that, uh, staff did not have, uh, time to go through a lot of documentation to see, um, exactly how, uh, individuals utilize bicycle parking and how they interact with their structures. Um, so staff speaking amongst other staff members, uh, really tried to, to get at the crux of that testimony. And note, would like to note that most of the, um, the, the sites within Garden City, um, five hundred feet would be impossible, um, most of our lots are three hundred feet deep at, at their maximum. And so staff looked at, um, some of the bigger lots, so some of the, the shopping centers and whatnot. And so if you look at the shopping center that's at the corner of, uh, Chindon and Glenwood, really if you put bike parking about midpoint, um, three hundred feet really would be about where you start seeing like midpoint and some of the larger shopping centers. And then anecdotally, staff was going, how do people utilize bicycles? And perhaps bicycles are utilized a little bit different than other modes of transportation where, um, anecdotally, again, staff hasn't, uh, gone through to, um, identify research that would back this up. But it seems that if you go out to eat, you may take your bike with you to your next, uh, location as you travel through, if you're utilizing your bike as a mode of transportation. And so staff has suggested that perhaps to get to that public testimony, um, public bicycle spaces could be provided within three hundred feet of a property in lieu of an onsite space. And again, that's not at, at the five hundred that was requested. Um, it was also requested that covered bike parking be allowed via garage. Any bike parking should be equivalent to one space. There's been no change in that because there would be nothing that would preclude this in this, uh, draft proposal and either one of those items. Um, this is a table, uh, for required motorical, motor vehicle parking spaces for residential uses, which has been a topic of conversation all the way through. Um, the current recommendation is that one and two bedrooms provide at least one parking space. Um, and there was conflicting, um, testimony at, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing where, uh, one individual testifying had indicated that they felt that single, um, that all single family provide two, um, parking spaces per unit. Whereas another had indicated that perhaps the one, two and three bedrooms, um, all be required to provide just one space. And then the other, um, testimony that we heard currently, the way that guest parking is recommended is that there be, um, for every two dwelling units, there be point five parking spaces per unit for guest parking as currently is required in code for the first ten dwelling units. Then there shall be point one parking spaces per unit for guest parking for every unit after the first ten. And the public testimony, um, for this matter was, uh, requesting that, um, everything that's highlighted be stricten- stricken, so it would be point one parking spaces per unit for guest parking. Um, then the minimal di- dimensional standards for motor vehicles. Um, this is, everything that's in black is as recommended. Um, but staff really did want to make sure that, uh, this was recommended again as a minimum requirement. And, uh, the, the, what's in blue is the city of Boise's current draft proposal. And so the areas that are in blue, um, are noting areas that, uh, Garden City's code would be, um, require a smaller dimensional standard, uh, than the city of Boise's, uh, proposed ordinance. Bless you. Um, and, and with that, uh, Steph also has brought up that, uh, compact, um, parking would be allowed further on in code for up to fifty percent of the required parking spaces. Um, one of the things prior to the hearing, uh, that the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, really wanted to make sure that there was enough flexibility, um, particularly for the existing, um, structures. And so, uh, staff is pointing out that table eight forty-six equivalent parking adjustments, uh, does allow for a fifty percent as, as currently drafted, a fifty percent reduction for existing structures. Um, and then there is for mult- what's considered multimodal sites, um, a twenty-five percent, uh, reduction for, um, um, areas that have certain criteria as being, um, what really follows guidance in the walkable, uh, criteria, um, for being walkable and there are other criteria such as proximity to certain uses, um, bike paths, et cetera, um, but twenty-five per- percent reduction for things that are within a quarter mile of that multimodal sites and a ten percent reduction if, uh, it's within a half a mile, so that would be something that an applicant wouldn't need to do anything for, if they're in a, a, a situation like that, they would automatically get a reduction in their parking. Um, the equivalent parking adjustments also allow as drafted for, um, applicants instead of meeting the parking ratios, uh, to provide, um, either funding, infrastructure, et so, et cetera, for transit, micro mobility, um, which is a term. Um, which is a term that's being utilized currently for um small trips. So it could be bicycles, e-scooters, et cetera. Um, shared parking, public parking, car share, et cetera, time limits. As ways to have equivalence uh to uh parking. Uh, requirements. And then if if those are not enough for somebody to reduce parking and they feel that they have. Um, they're deprived property rights or special conditions. There is the ability to request for a further reduction through a conditional use permit or plan unit development based on criteria. A new concept um is the parking benefit district and the parking benefit uh district. Um, as drafted is enabling legislation to create special districts, but it does not create any special districts at this point in time. Um, and those special districts would have to have their boundaries adopted into code. And then the criteria adopted by resolution. And a parking benefit district might be an area of town um that has public meters or. Um, permitted parking that may have different criteria on the parking that would be required. And any funds that are not utilized for the operations of that. District would then be able to be utilized for parking related projects. So additional supportive um infrastructure, it may be sidewalks, additional meters, et cetera. Um, again, it's just the enabling legislation, it doesn't create any districts in and of itself. The next steps again are a public hearing uh before you next at the next city council meeting. And then there could be one or three readings of the ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, um. Clarifying questions.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a couple of questions? I'll be brief because I know it's kind of like, so. What I want to make sure I understand my definition in terms of E V ready, I'm assuming means they're. Putting in the conduit but not pulling the wire until they need it, is that correct?
Mayor, Councilman, reject, that's exactly.
So the only thing I. Great presentation, by the way. That I don't see ever taken into account. Is just the valley's utter lack of transportation. And the valley's. Utter lack of transportation, public transportation for the foreseeable future. So if people can't take the bus wherever they're going, they're gonna have to have cars, right? So I have a hard time sometimes, you know, just with the argument of, you know, Seattle or Portland or, you know, they. They have world-class transportation, we don't. So I think without, and I don't have an opinion of this, but it just seems to me without solid public transportation, you're just gonna have to have vehicles. So reducing parking may not be the right thing, so I I didn't really see that taken into account. And then the other thing that just. Kind of comes out is, you know, we have winter here. I mean, people don't ride their bikes in the winter, they drive their cars and because we don't have public transportation, they can't take the bus. And I literally live on the Greenbelt and there's no one riding their bike on the Greenbelt right now. For work, and so they have to have cars, and so I'm at conflict of wanting to.
Be careful not to express an opinion.
I just don't understand, I guess I I didn't see that taken into account in terms of just. Um, accounting for number of car volume.
And mayor and members of the council, one thing I might note. On the planning and zoning N A votes, there was a discussion that they did feel that. In order to. To, I think somewhat to your point about um the required number of parking spaces. There was a discussion that um a a benefit district, a parking benefit district would need to be in place. In order to to not require uh the the required number of spaces. So at some level, I think that is to your to your point and an important conversation piece in in what they were trying to portray.
So they they're saying that if you're gonna reduce. Required parking, you need to have a parking benefit.
Uh, another strategy in place, so the parking meters, the parking permits, et cetera, which would be achievable through that parking benefit district. It doesn't go to your transit point, but it does go to that.
And I I'm just thinking of numbers of cars and how do how do we reduce that, given those two factors?
Uh, as I, as I look through this, I'm on page twenty-seven. Uh. And. I may have missed this, but uh the electric vehicle charging facility standards is that. I didn't see where it said you're just providing the conduit and not. And not improving them, but it's.
And mayor, thank you, um, that goes to the 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 definitions, so that would actually be in the definition section of the E V ready parking space.
Okay, so uh this, just a clarifying question, so. Uh, all mu- multifamily, mixed use and non-residential shall include at least a minimum number of E V parking. Showing in the table, so. Uh. That's a. That's. A bar would have to have E V parking, uh. Uh, the pizza joint, they, you know, takeout pizza joint or, you know, you take the pull up, get it and leave. Uh, and cook it at home, that'd have to have a E V parking, uh, okay, I just. I could go on and on and on and on, I just just want to make clarify that, that this. This actually means everything other than. Uh. Non-multifamily residential.
Mayor, as as drafted, as presented, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Have a question.
Yes.
As I um understand this, uh, spots that are designated for electric vehicle charging. Uh, would be signed to reserve the parking space for E V users. I I understand the rationale and the need for that, but. Uh, until such time that we can provide enough users of E Vs, it would seem um. It would seem that we would want to be a little bit flexible to allow someone to utilize that space if there's not. Uh, a a demand to charge from an E V vehicle, and I don't know how. You know, administratively or or enforce, how to enforce something like that, I I think it could be a. A nightmare to to try to enforce that.
Okay, um, incidentally, the summary that you started with. That was really well done, I was. You made my notes look pretty bad, frankly.
Mr. Mayor, I have just three questions, Jenna, and maybe uh Mr. Lawrence. Can can uh throw in on these as well, on page nine. Um. At the top of the page, item four eight one C three P four. And one boat and one travel trailer less than thirty feet in length shall be stored on an approved pad, dot, dot, dot. Um. So, and and maybe uh, Mr. Lawrence, this is more for you, but uh. Can you assure us that this uh term travel trailer cannot be construed to mean or interpreted? As applying to uh so-called tiny houses on wheels?
Mayor and uh. Councilmember Heller, I I I mean, I think we'd want to have a definition of travel trailer, or do we have? Does the current definition of travel trailer exclude tiny home on wheels? Do we want to exclude it, uh, tiny homes on wheels? Um, not asking for anybody to deliberate, but that's something we probably want to put some sideboards on.
Um, I'm I'm not sure that uh mayor, um, I'm not sure that code. Um, identifies what a travel trailer is. Um, it's cert- I'm not sure that a travel trailer is defined in Title Eight. Um, specifically, um, and I can say that it certainly uh code would. Predate discussions related to tiny homes, so I I can say with some assurance that even if it is in there, that it wouldn't specifically exclude.
Yeah, so that that's a concern I have, particularly given the situation we read about recently, um. On 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 page uh twenty-nine, I have a question on uh. The. Uh, reference uh eight four D five, section fourteen G nine. And it looks, it looks to me like this is just a grandfather clause uh with respect to parking. And I'm I'm just wondering what the necessity of putting this into code would be.
Um, and mayor, councilmember Heller, uh, there is a a request for the legal department to specifically look at that. Um, and I don't know if the legal department has yet, um, because that section of code uh was repealed. Um, and does that grandfather clause need to be specified? Um, or will it get lost in the future where this code would require changes, changes of use? Uh, to upgrade their parking?
Okay, so so it just makes that uh that that grandfathering explicit and conditional, is that right? Okay. Um, and then my third question is on uh page forty in the packet. And the references uh eight four D section six B one. Criteria for approval of a parking reduction, the decision maker may only approve reduced parking if it finds that A, B, C, D. Uh. My my instinct is to assume you're talking here about uh decision makers in the sense that. Uh, planning officers, uh, design consultants and so forth, and not um. Giving a directive to council members, this is uh. Uh, is that right, or is or is, am I mistaken?
Um, mayor, councilmember Heller, uh, the reason that it's drafted as decision maker is because there may be a di- a different decision maker that's making. A decision that this criteria applies to, so it could be the city council, it could be. Um, staff i- if it's a design review that goes through the new process. And so it could be a a different um decision maker depending on the application type.
Yeah, I understand that so much, so my concern would be then uh the language, the decision maker may only approve reduced parking if it finds that. But uh my understanding is city council would be able to grant variances. Uh, and and they and they may be for situations not covered under those uh three conditions.
Um, mayor, councilmember Heller, there is a separate section of code uh related to variances. And so um should somebody take the variance approach? Which is a very high level of scrutiny, uh, they certainly could request that that be reviewed as a variance.
Um. Well, it it seems to me to box in to to these uh criteria, the uh decision maker's uh latitude. If the decision maker is is uh construed at the city council.
If the word only was stricken, would that um be less boxy?
Well, I'll. Thank you, uh, council president, I'll defer to Charles on that.
Mayor, council, my legal opinion would it would make it less boxy.
Hello, we're two lawyers.
I I like the use of the vernacular, but uh.
Point take, point taken, I mean, it only means only, so maybe you want to strike that word. So, so. Because if it says only, then that means not not the variance standards, it just means only those.
Exactly, yeah, okay, that's a clarifying comment, your question, good catch. Um, thank you.
Questions.
Thank you, uh, Jen. Insurance, we will uh. Make the summary available to everyone. In this presentation, really thorough.
It's in the packet already, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's in the, the hour points in the backup.
Oh. You know, her presentation, I didn't.
It's in the back.
It's in the, it's the hyperlink, right?
Oh, no.
Um, we we can certainly, I'll make sure that it's available. Um, as well as probably reiterated at the next.
Available time to read this. I'll warm you out. Okay, uh, further questions or clarifying or further clarifications for? Ms. Thornborough.
I just appreciate the time that the drafters put into this, it represents a body of work that's hard to imagine.
Good job.
Yeah, thank you.
I would echo that. I appreciate the time it's been put into it.
I want to hit that there, no.
Okay, that concludes the business on our agenda for this evening, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Smear, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor say aye. All right, thank you, we're adjourned.